Oh yeah, go for it.
No?
I call to order the Rosemount Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 28th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us. A few items before we start with our agenda this evening. For those that are in attendance, there is a QR code on the table in the back if you would like to download or view the packet for tonight's meeting. Also, we do have a lot of people in attendance for tonight's meeting and anticipate a lot of you wanting to speak. We will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and are prepared and concise when you come up to the podium to speak this evening. So I want to give you that heads up now in case you want to prepare your comments.
Are we going to take questions and then answer them after they're all done?
Yes, that's a great, great comment, Commissioner Reed. We will listen to all the public comments this evening and any questions that come up that require addressing by staff, we will then, or the commission, we will address those after the public hearing is closed. So during the public hearing, we will just be listening and taking in the public's comments. With that, we will move on to our agenda this evening. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
None.
Okay. We do have a section for audience input. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda, they may do so at this time, coming to the podium stating your name and address for the record, and we ask that these, the audience input also is three minutes of speaking time. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda?
Michael Pekerek, 13572 Delwood Way, Rosemount. This is not on the agenda, but I've got a couple of questions I would like you all to answer now, not after the meeting, because I want these on the record and everyone to hear the answers to this, because not everybody can make it to all your meetings. First question is, who do you work for? Anybody? I would like an answer.
Sir, I'll ask you, ask all your questions and then we will respond to you.
Well, I would like answers now. So who do you work for? Anybody?
Sir, the front, our audience input is to take your comments and then we will respond.
Right, but I'm still asking a question that I would like an answer now for.
Okay, so once we start responding, then your comments are done? Is that?
Uh, no.
Ready for us to respond?
No, because I've got a couple of questions. So again, who do you work for?
So the way our audience, I will again state how our audience input section works, is for us to take your comments, you've got three minutes to share your comments with us, and then-
This will go a lot quicker if you just answer my questions.
It will also go quicker if you listen and abide by the format we run this meeting in.
Right, but you guys aren't listening to us.
I am listening to you right now and you-
Well, no, but you guys don't listen to us. You guys are doing stuff in the background, you're working for the Met Council, I don't even know why we have a planning commission, because you're taking direction directly from the Met Council. You're doing things behind our back, and, you know, I want to know why. Why are you doing this behind our back? We pay your salaries, you work for us, and you're not abiding by our, you're not even asking us for input on any of this. City Council isn't? You know, why do we have you guys here? Why do we have a city council? Why do we have a planning commission? You guys are doing nothing, you're just, you're just pushing the agenda of the Met Council. And who knows where the Met, well, we know where the Met Council's getting their direction from. And we want answers, we want them tonight, not some time down the road.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.[307.33][307.33](APPLAUSE)
Can you make a speaker something for the people who are out here to hear, or, I don't know, weren't you-
Staff, is there-
The TV should be on.
Out in the hall, okay. I didn't, I couldn't hear anything on this, so I stepped in, but we didn't get it.
Do we have someone on staff that can check that and see?
We'll take a peek at that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I will, I will attempt to answer a few of those questions that were brought up here, and I was going to defer to Adam, but maybe Logan, I will defer to you and Adam's, while Adam's working on the TV. Who do we work for? We are appoint, the planning commission are appointed members, appointed by city council. We apply for our positions on planning commission, we are appointed by city council to serve. We are not elected and we are not paid. We do receive a very small $35 stipend per meeting to cover a very fraction amount of our time, which amounts to very little of our time that we volunteer. It is a volunteer position. We do not work for the Met Council, we work for the city of Rose, the city of Rosemount, the residents of Rosemount, and we represent as residents in Rosemount, we have applied to volunteer for this position, to serve in this capacity, and to serve our community. So in terms of who we work for, I would say I work for myself, my neighbors, and the other residents in the city of Rosemount. We do not have any direct interaction with the Met Council. We get information from city staff, we hear residents through planning commission, through workshops, through open houses, a variety of venues, and we make recommendations to the city council to the best of our abilities based on all the information that we can, that we can receive. In terms of why we have a city council and a planning commission and Met Council, Logan, I don't know if you want to address any of that as well?
Yeah, I think the chair did a fabulous job wrapping up kind of who they work for. We on this side of the table are appointed staff, we are paid, this is our full-time job, just to answer that question. But, but yes, the planning commission is advisory to the city council, so their duty is to take some action, some of their action is final, a large majority of their action is advice or a recommendation to the city council who then takes final actions. So we have a planning commission, we have a park and rec commission, we have a utility commission, we have environmental and sustainability commission, so city governments are generally operated where you have folks like this who are just, you know, good-hearted residents who rose their hand and wanted to serve, who then advise the city council, who you folks elect, whether you voted for them or not, they, they want enough votes to be, to be elected. So that's a, I think that's the quickest answer I could give, and then for an example, this one, I, they're, you know, the Met Council comment, I think she, she commented on it, well, Met Council doesn't demand that we develop, they don't demand that we, that we do anything, and that's a narrative that's been placed out in, in, in the ether that is frankly inaccurate. They don't, they don't tell us what to do, and the Met Council doesn't force anybody to make an application for a project either. So with that, I won't keep going, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Logan. Adam, any update on the TVs out there?
Yep, volume is up, we should be able to hear TV, or this meeting from the lobby out there.
Perfect, thank you. There any other audience input on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing done, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
It's okay.
Yes.
I stood up and you looked down, that's okay. Well, hello, hi, Rosemount Planning Commission, my name is Karen Miller, I'm a resident of Lakeville, Dakota County.
Can I get you to state your address, please, for the record?
Sure. 17985 Jakarta Path, Lakeville, Minnesota 55044. So I'm a resident of Dakota County, and in September I came and spoke to the city council when I became aware of the, the Facebook data center proposition, and recently, since then, I've been learning more about it and listening more to concerns of friends of mine who are in Rosemount. So I'm here to stand with the citizens of Rosemount and their concerns about the Gymnast LLC Data Proposal Center.
Ma'am, that item is on our agenda this evening, would you prefer your comments be attributed to that item this evening?
Oh.
This is the section for input, not on our agenda.
Oh, so am I speaking at the wrong time?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you, if you're speaking about the gymnast application for the data-
So if it's about the gymnast application, I can wait until the appropriate time?
Yep, we want public hearing for that item.
Okay.
Yep, we've got two items on our public hearing section, a request by CA Gear, the request by Gymnast LLC.
Okay, well, I'll come back up at that time.
I don't have to cut you off, I will.
Okay, thank you.
It would make more sense, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on items that are not currently on our agenda this evening?
Hello. My name is Kayla Hauser, I'm a resident of Rosemount, my address is 14569 Tuhome Avenue West, and I would like to discuss today about the Meta Data Facility that is being proposed and not presented towards city council. Reason I say that is because in the end, you have the final say. I know the agreement is between the U of M and Meta, but you as city council have the right to say yes or no, what company comes into our city limits. That is why so many people behind me are here concerned with questions and wanting answers. When I, yes?
Kayla, I apologize to interrupt, I just want to point out that we do have gymnast, the application by gymnast on our agenda this evening, so there is a public hearing section for that.
Okay, then, I would like to then discuss, if we're going to discuss off-topic stuff, can we talk about the safety of Rosemount then?
Yes, if you would like to address the planning commission with that?
Sure.
You can do that for three minutes, yep.
Okay, I would like to discuss the future safety of this generation and the next generation before us in Rosemount. The reason I say that is, we, yes, have a generation who have electronics, that is a given, we, every day, we do it. But my concern as a citizen, as a parent, and as a taxpayer, when are we going to say enough is enough? When are we going to put limits on this? And when are we going to say this is going too far for our children? I would like to know if the city council is ever going to put in place procedures or steps of what is going too far, what is too much, and what is okay? Because right now, there's a free rein of what can be done, what can be harvested, what can be sold, and what is out in the open for public view. I would like to more know about our children in our community, our adolescents who are using social media and technology and such force. If we're ever going to implement a restriction on companies who advocate for 13-plus or teenage apps like TikTok or Meta or things like, in that sense, I know we're going to talk about it later, but I would like to know in general, is city council ever going to come up with a plan to keep our children safe from these types of companies that put profit over health and safety of our children? I would love to hear that later, when you have an answer.
Thank you for your comments, Kayla. I do just want to remind everyone here this evening that we are the planning commission, we are not your city council, within our purview is the land use. So while your comments tonight are, are heard, city council will hear them as well, they do watch our meetings, they're either listening now, or they will watch the recording, and they will receive the minutes from those, so they will hear, hear your comments as well as the city staff. The planning commission at the city of Rosemount, we, we oversee land use and land, how that land is used. So not that we can't, not that that doesn't necessarily intersect with safety, but in terms of putting any policies in place or anything like that, those would be more, not within our purview here.
Do you have any comment on or asking question on that?
Yes.
While I understand you are the planning commission, I did go to city council at the last, when they had their open house, and I was informed by my city council, those who complain, those are the only ones who are showing up. And I would just like to know, how is that okay to put people, taxpayers, citizens, telling us we're Karens if we care? This is a big issue, this is a very big issue, not just for adults, but for children. They use technology a lot. So I bring this to you, the city council, as well as planning commission, because I've been told it's no big deal, it is what it is. We can't tell company what to do and what they can't do, but I feel like the planning commission, the city council, and everyone in the city can say yes or no if we want this here or not. That's what we're trying to discuss, whether we want it here or not. And a lot of people are saying, we do not. They have a lot of David Harsing that they're doing without people's consent, as well as other companies. I know we're going to talk about Meta later, but I do know there is another company that is trying to get their company's data facilities in Rosemount as well, not just Meta, it's another company. So that's why I'm asking, when are we going to put limits? When are we going to say no? What is too much? What is a big facility, what's a little facility? Why are they picking here? Why not another place? Why not tear down half of Minneapolis and put it there? There's so much real estate there not being used. Why here? Why can't we say no? That's the only reason I'm asking, because I did go to city council. They told me my complaints are just complaints, even though I'm concerned and I want answers. That's the only reason I'm coming to you and asking.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on any items not on our agenda?
Hello, how are you tonight?
Good.
Packed room tonight, it's nice to see. My name is Amy Bergam, Dakota County resident.
Amy, can you state your address for the record?
7189 Clayton Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, many of you know that we, the last five years, it's been kind of a turmoil of a lot of learning going on, okay? And part of this is a big globalist agenda.
Ma'am, we need you to speak to the microphone.
And part of this is a big globalist agenda called New World Order. Okay, this is a UN agenda of 2021 and a 2030 mission goals. And since I have three minutes, I'm going to just cruise right through them. New World Order. It is to have a one-world government, one-world cashless currency, one-world central bank, one-world military, the end of national sovereignty, the end of all privately-owned property, the end of the family unit, depopulation, control of population growth and population density, mandatory multiple vaccines, universal basic income, microchip society for purchasing, traveling, tracking, and controlling, implementation of a world social credit system like China has, trillions of appliances hooked onto 5G monitoring system, the Internet of Things, government-raised children, government-owned and government-owned, owned and controlled schools, colleges, universities, the end of private transportation, owning cars, et cetera, all businesses owned by government slash corporations, the restriction of non-essential air travel, human beings concentrated into human settlement zones and cities, the end of, the end of irrigation, the end of private farms and grazing livestock, the end of single-family homes, restricted land use that serves human needs, the ban of natural, synthetic drugs, and naturopathic medicine, and the end of fossil fuels. Do some of these items on this list already ring a bell in the last five years that we have gone through? And if you're, if you're shaking your head yes, then please research Agenda 21 and Agenda 30. Write that down, okay? And vote no for Agenda 21 and Agenda 30. Thank you.
Thank you.[1130.32][1130.32](APPLAUSE) Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on items not on our agenda this evening? Seeing done, we will move forward with the consent agenda. Are there any, our consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the October 24th regular meeting and a request by US Homes Talomar Fourth Edition for their final plat. Are there any comments or questions from the commission on the consent agenda? Seeing done, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We have no old business this evening, so we will move forward with our public hearing section. The first public hearing is a request by CA Gear for approval of rezoning, a major amendment to the custom apparel planned unit development agreement, and a conditional use permit to construct a 7,400 square foot addition onto the existing sportswear manufacturing and athletic training facility. And I will turn that over to Julia for presentation.
All right, so this item is a request by Custom Apparel Inc. for approvals to construct an addition onto the existing sportswear manufacturing and athletic training facility. So a little bit of a summary of the request, so the planning commission is being asked to consider requests submitted by the applicant for approval of rezoning of the site from BP PUD, Business Park Plan Unit Development, to BPC4PUD, Business Park slash General Commercial Plan Unit Development, a major amendment to the custom apparel plan unit development agreement, and a conditional use permit for the operation of an outdoor dining area for 11 or more seats to allow for the construction of a 7,400 square foot addition onto the existing sportswear manufacturing and athletic training facility. So a little bit of background, so in 2018, a planning development master development plan with the final site and building plan and rezoning was approved by city council, which allowed for the construction of a 13,552 square foot facility that would allow for the housing of the custom apparel, sportswear manufacturing business and athletic training area. So a little background on the site location, so the subject parcel is located roughly three-fourths of a mile south of County Road 42, on the west side of South Roberts Trail, and just south of the Progressive Rail, Railroad Bridge that extends over State Highway 3. The subject parcel is 3.75 acres in size, and the city does own the public worksite next to the railroad right-of-way located northwest of the site, and as well as the two smaller outlines adjacent to the public works property to the north. So a little bit of background on the rezoning of the site, so the subject parcel is currently zoned BP PUD, that Business Park Plan Unit Development, and is being proposed as to be rezoned to BPC4PUD. So a little bit of background on that, so the site was re-guided to BP Business Park back in 2018 with the change of the zoning of the site for the intended use for that warehouse, manufacturing facility, and athletic training area. Then the uses proposed for this expansion aren't allowed use and a conditional use within the C4 zoning district, so that's why there's that proposed to add on that C4 zoning addition with that. So under the city's code, in the planning development section, it does state, it does allow PUDs with a mix of uses, so long as the overall area of the PUD is designated for those uses in the comp plan, and stated on this slide, the comprehensive plan does allow for C4 zoning districts within the BP land use designation, particularly near intersections of major roads which this property is located next to State Highway 3. Then there's also previous land within the city that does fit under that PUD mixed zoning. So back in 2020, about 5.5 acres of land was rezoned within Rosewood Commons from C4 General Commercial to C4 High Density Residential, which now has that dual C4, R4 PUD within that Rosewood Commons area. And then a major amendment is also requested with this submittal, so there are six conditions that fall under it being a major amendment. So the proposed project does increase the gross floor area by more than 5%, decreases the amount of open space by more than 5%, and sustainably, sustantly alters the location of parking areas, therefore that major amendment is required within this request. So here's a photo of the site plan being proposed, so the building expansion will be located off the western side of the building, that you can see is that proposed building on the site plan. The expansion will include a tap house, a ground floor patio area, golf simulators and lounge area on the second floor, and then also an outdoor roof patio as well. The site will continue to be accessed from the existing driveway access off of Canada Circle as well. So off-street parking, so currently on site, there are 70 stalls, which does exceed that 50 minimum that was required back in 2018 with the initial building of the site. So proposed is an additional 37 stalls to the west of the existing area, as you can see on the site plan. Currently, there are 34 stalls in between Canada Circle and the existing front of the building, and then 36 stalls in the rear towards the north end of the site. So they do also have a proof of parking west of the proposed 37 additional stalls, which does meet the minimum spaces of 150 stalls. And then the landscape plan, so the landscape plan was reviewed back in 2018 during the initial development of the site. Since the development area itself is not increasing in size from what was originally reviewed, no additional trees will be required to be added. Foundation plannings are required, though, and the updated landscape plan shown on this slide shows 90 foundation, foundation plannings, which does exceed the minimum of 30. Also, they do plan on salvaging seven trees and replanting them on the north side of the proposed expansion of the parking area, and as well as on the southern side. And then here is an example of the floor plan, this is the first floor, you can see the proposed patio, outdoor patio on the first floor, as well as the tap house seating inside. And then the second floor does show that outdoor, outdoor patio, and as well as the lounge area and golf simulators as well. Then here is a photo of the elevations, so the applicant is proposing a consistent look with the existing building, which includes fiber cement wood grain siding panels, and then also pre-finished ribbed metal panels as an accent to that. The facade on the existing southeast corner that's existing, you can see right here, does have that taller element, and this new addition will also have that taller facade on the western portion as well. Then on a little overview of the conditional use permit portion, so in addition to the general conditional use permit standards, the proposed use must comply with specific performance standards for outdoor seating, and also dining area for 11 or more seats, which you can see the seven conditions with that, as well as the findings as well, which are in the staff report that you reviewed as well. So there are three motions for recommended action. One, to motion to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance, rezoning the property from BP PUD, Business Park Plan Unit Development, to BPC4PUD, Business Park General Commercial Plan Unit Development, a motion to recommend the city council approve a major amendment to the custom apparel plan unit development agreement, subject to the conditions, and then on the third, motion to recommend the city council approve a conditional use permit for custom apparel allowing operation of an outdoor seating or dining area for 11 or more seats, subject to conditions A through D. And then I will take any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Julia.
Hey, well, I have one question for you that I'll start with, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the commission. With this rezoning to C4, if the businesses should change in the future, it would still be subject to the PUD and still limited within that-
Yes.
Restraits, it wouldn't be like a blanket C4 designation across the whole property?
It would still be subject to the PUD.
To the PUD conditions. To the PUD, yes. The PUD, okay, thank you. Are there other questions from the commission?
A couple, so, and I think it's, it's clear, but I just want to make sure I understand it. The, the noise limitations, it's, we've seen these before, right? So there's, there's no regulations or conditions around it, it's really just basically where it is, we're not expecting there to be any noise carrying to residential areas, and they need to make sure that the noise does not exceed standards where the residential areas can hear it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and there's a pretty good tree line there by the, by the railroad tracks.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, sure. The other thing, and just more curiosity, on the, on the plan, it looked like there was a men's restroom and a unisex restroom, and I wasn't clear if that was correct, or maybe just some clarification on why that, why that would be?
The city's building official does also review what comes forward before we present this to you as well, and there was no concerns in regards to that. Again, it will have to go in, in front of the building department again when their plans are submitted, so that fine-tuning will also be identified with the building, the building permit as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the last que, did you have a-
Just to ask, applicant does hear this evening-
Yes.
-address that as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and then the last thing is the, I think the parking probably is okay, because there's proof of the overflow. Couple clarifying questions. One, there's no parking on the street, right? So if there-
There is parking on Canada Circle.
There is parking on Ca-
Yes.
Okay, so if short-term, they're hitting that limit, they can park, and then they would expand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's it then, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions. The outdoor seating on the, on the roof patio, how many seats will be up there?
I believe... I believe... The applicant might be able better to speak on that. I know that that was identified within their plans that they submitted in regards to parking as well, as that was a requirement, one per three seats, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I didn't know, is there a limit to the amount of seating they can have outside within the zone?
It's more, comes down to parking mostly with that, and we don't specifically have a limited number within our city code in regards to that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Whitman, so, not a maximum, so the CUP that's being requested is due to that exceedance of that 11 seats within the city code. Any maximums would be reviewed as part of the building plans by the building official for, you know, safety, that type of a thing.
Okay.
And then, that would then in turn impact SAC credits or other things that would be due as a part of just the overall facilities planning.
Okay, great. Thank you both on that. The other question on the roof, and I suppose this is probably the same answer, but I'm thinking like safety issues for the roof and like barriers or whatever, you know, prevent people from falling off the roof.
Yeah.
That's something that will be reviewed by the building official?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And then, final question, has there been any traffic analysis done with that intersection of Canada Circle and 3? Just, you know, thinking more people coming out? Any thought put into that or analysis of that?
Not to my knowledge. I know that Canada Circle extension did just get finalized as well, going east.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but not to my knowledge.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Whitman, we don't require traffic studies for every development application. Within the city's comprehensive plan and transportation master plan, it does account for growth governed by the land use within these areas of Rosemount. And as Julia did mention, the extension of Canada Circle or Boulder East next to the Home Depot Distribution Center is in place. So, State Highway 3 is a min dot highway, so they have all of their current transportation and traffic numbers always available, and this wouldn't be something that would raise to their level of concern.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. I'll have a couple of comments later, but yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
I think I have one for the applicant, but I'll wait for that.
Perfect. Thank you, Julia. At this time, we will begin the public hearing for this item. We will invite the applicant to come forward first and address questions from the commission, and then we will invite anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item to do so. We do ask anyone coming to the podium to state your name and address for the record and to speak within your three-minute limit. Thank you. The applicant would like to come forward?
Hello?
Good evening. Hello?
Good evening.
Is there anything you'd like to speak to, or if you could state your name and address for the record first?
So, I'm Nate Bry, and it's 13402 Avila Ave.
Okay, thank you. Is there any comments or things you would like to address to begin with?
No, other than that, I'm a Rosemount boy, graduated from Rosemount High School. The dream was always to build something that hopefully one day I could come back and benefit my community. And so, by doing these little things like athletic apparel, I'm putting uniforms on kids, creating camaraderie, you know, helping them to achieve goals, develop. I continue to do that. I sponsor teams, I sponsor the high school, different sporting groups. The more I can do, the more I can help, you know, in the long term of helping to do this type of stuff. So, this is just, I feel, another phase of the overall ability to help in the long term.
Perfect, thank you. We did have a comment by Commissioner Reed on the bathrooms. We've...
Yeah, I mean, things are evolving when it comes to this world, and you're seeing more and more upscale places starting to do unisex bathrooms. Hy-Vee is a perfect example. Yes, they save men and women, but at the end of the day, you know, you could use both of them, and it doesn't matter. I've been into some trendy microbrews, and they're doing this type of concept. We threw in the urinal aspect for the men, just as a means to try to cater to some traffic going there that doesn't necessarily need to use a toilet. But at the end of the day, if you gotta use a toilet, you can, and it doesn't matter. The amenities will be the same for men and women. It'll be a lockable door, so it's not like...
Stalls.
We're not fostering any goofiness. It's just more to help with the flow.
I always hate when you see that women's line is so long, and there's no one in the men's line.
Yeah, because if you gotta just go number one, it's easy for men, you know? So, it's like, but if we can help just kind of funnel it through, it works.
Perfect, thank you. And then, Commissioner Rivera had a question.
Yeah, so it is a nice facility. Thank you for bringing that to Rosemount. I remember going to the Cold Dome with the softball daughter years ago to practice, so thank you for a nice facility. My question was, if you are going to add the addition of a tap house serving, I believe, probably adult beverages, is the tap house going to have the same hours as the athletic facility, or will it be longer hours versus the athletic facility kind of aspect of it?
It'll be roughly the same. I mean, we're not trying to foster, you know, over-drinking. It's just more of a means to bring the community together when the, you know, we're running ourselves ragged these days with all of our kids' sports, so when you drop them off to come and train at our facility, to be able to just walk over next door and have, you know, a brewski, within that hour, we feel it's kind of a good synergy between the two.
So, similar to the rink over here with?
Right, like the pond and...
The pond, yeah, okay.
Hundred percent, same concept, I guess.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commission for the applicant?
Yes, I just have one.
Yes.
Comment on the toilets. I understand your, what you were saying about the unisex and the men's, but I don't know that the building code would accept that, so just wanted to bring that up, that in the building code, it doesn't have provisions for no women, it's either men, it's both men and women and the number of fixtures, so. So, I thought initially, I looked at it, and I thought it was a typo.
Okay, well, I guess along the way, we can address that.
Right, work with the building officials and staff on that, yes. Any other questions from the commission for the applicant? Thank you.
Yeah.
If there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening, you may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record.
Excuse me, if you can't hear, I'm just trying to keep up your TV volume, please be turned up. Speak into the lights. Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Can you hear us now?
We can hear you speak.
Okay, okay. Bring it closer.
We will bring it closer, and then, is there someone from staff that can check on the TVs? Yes, Adam's gonna come check on the TVs, or somebody is gonna come check on the TVs? Thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there anyone in the, yes?
Hello, Commission, my name is Chad Byersdorfer. I'm a resident in Rosemount, address is 14345 Cimarron Avenue West. Just one question for the applicant, if that's okay?
Yep, please just ask into the microphone so that he and everybody else can hear you.
Sure, the question was, is there going to be any plans for food service along with beverages and whatnot, or more of a food truck type of design, or is this, do the plans include kitchen, those types of things? Just trying to maybe plan my reservations for six months from now?
So, it sounds good. We will ask him to come back and answer any questions that come up at the end of the public hearing. Is there any other comments from the public on this item this evening? So, if you'd like to come up and address that, since that's our only question, that would be great.
Need my address again?
Nope.
All right, so anyhow, when it comes to food, we do have, it's called a concession stand in there. We already got one in the current Player Development Center, but we're planning to, ideally, I want to do like a Neapolitan-style pizza, kind of like a punch pizza, because it takes a small footprint, and you're able to produce, you know, really good pizzas really quick. So, initially, that's my concept that I think I'm going to move forward with, but I got a little time to be able to plan, but we'll try to do some more fancier stuff. We're not going to get into the grill and the oil and all that stuff, just in the fire extinguisher hoods. So, whatever we can do when it comes to like air frying, which you can do a lot of stuff with air frying these days, we'll get pretty, you know, creative when it comes to that. But the goal is to do like a good Neapolitan-style pizza. But the food truck thing has been on the forefront of my mind, too, because that's an easy thing to be able to get with different vendors and be able to roll them in and give a little bit different flavor.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask applicant Nate, I know, just to disclose, I'm a member of the athletic facility, my family and I, and we frequent it all the time, love the place. And Nate, are you able to disclose in those, any other plans you have for what's going on in the tap house with the hobby?
Oh, well, we also have a little section in the back where we're going to open up a cart...
Nate, I'm gonna ask you to speak straight to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Just so that they, instead of, I know it's hard to not face the audience, but they'll hear better.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we have a plan in the back. Right now, we just have it as a card shop, but we want to open up like a card trading little area due to the, that's just a better way to get the families together, to be able to come in. Cards are a big thing right now when it comes to collectibles, so I think it'll just be a fun little thing to be able to come in, open up a deck of cards, open up a box of cards with your kids, or by yourself with some buds, be able to have a brewski, just kind of going on this whole sports theme and just adding to it different layers. That's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yep, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been motioned by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is now closed. We do have three motions in front of us this evening. I will just start off, before we make a motion, to say I think this is a great addition to the city. Thank you for bringing it forward, and it's been great to see the business there, SCA Apparel grow and succeed, and we're excited for this addition, or I'm excited for this addition anyways, and my kids are all grown and gone, but I plan to frequently visit. Is there anybody else that would like to make comments before we move forward?
I'll just echo what the chair said, and I really agree. I mean, this is one of the first plans I saw five years ago when I was on the commission, and glad to see it's thriving, and you're a great part of the community, so looking forward to this.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Yeah, just once again, I mean, this facility is an outstanding business in Rosemount. We, our family moved here relatively recently, and we came from warmer, sunnier places, and we're a baseball family, and this facility has really been our home away from home for my son and daughter, baseball, softball. I know Nate and Brandon, the manager over there, just do a tremendous job. It really is a family-run business. My only questions were just, you know, doing my due diligence here, talking about potential safety issues, that sort of thing. Sounds like those are all going to be resolved in line with the building official analysis, and so I have full confidence that will be resolved. Yeah, I just really think this is an innovative, awesome expansion of the already awesome use.
Thank you. With that, I will start with a motion to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance rezoning the property from BP PUD Business Park Plan Unit Development to BPC 4 PUD Business Park General Commercial Plan Development.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger and seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, motion to recommend the city council approve a major amendment to the custom apparel planned unit development agreement, subject to conditions A and B.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Haber. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And the last motion on this item this evening, to recommend the city council approve a conditional use permit for custom apparel allowing operation of an outdoor seating or dining area for 11 or more seats, subject to conditions A through D as listed in the staff report.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Whitman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. That concludes this item this evening. This item will go forward to city council on December 19th. Also, the item on our consent agenda this evening for Talomore 4th Edition also will go forward to city council on December 19th, for anyone tracking that item. The next item on our public hearing agenda this evening is a request by Gymnast LLC for preliminary and final plat approval and PUD final site and building plan approval, and I will turn this over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you said, this is a request for a final site and building plan as part of the planned unit development process and preliminary and final plats for the construction of a data center on land owned by University of Minnesota. So, the final site and building plan approval is required as part of the planned unit development process. The PUD process is a two-step process, the first being the planned unit development master development plan, which was approved by the city council in March of 2023. The PUD for the site includes some approved deviations related to building materials, landscaping, and fence height, and those are mitigated through increased setbacks. The city does use the PUD process for a lot of developments coming through here, most frequently, single-family home developments where the trade-offs or mitigating factors are increased building materials. The plat request would subdivide the subject parcel from, or subject property from the greater Umore Park land. The plat includes right-of-way drainage and utility easement dedication, as well as parcels for a substation and future water tower from the city's water system. Just to let the planning commission know, the legal authority they have for this approval is quasi-judicial in nature. That means the planning commission is acting as a judge to determine if the regulations within the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and approved planned unit development agreement are being followed. And generally, if the proposed site plan meets those standards and requirements for reviewing this type of a request, it must be approved. The planning commission's role is to weigh the technical aspects of the proposed site plan and not the end user. Again, the planning commission's role is to review proposed requests against the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations on the site. So, the site itself is approximately 280 acres within the Umore Park boundaries, located immediately east of Dakota County Technico College. For some context or reference here, to the east is Highway 52, to the west, Highway 3, further here with downtown, and then closer is Akron Avenue and County Road 42. Just southwest of that intersection is the Amber Fields Development, which was the first private development within Umore Park. The site as it sits now is used for agricultural purposes. It contains grasslands and wooded areas. The applicant's proposal would see two main function buildings located centrally on the site, as well as two ancillary buildings and office, that is about 22,000 square feet, and then a support building used to house material and equipment for the operation of the site. The site also contains some mechanical areas, that would be where the cooling equipment is located. In the southeast corner of the site are two substations, one owned by the applicant and another owned by XL Energy. Now, main access into the site would be from Blaine Avenue, and there would be a small gatehouse located at that entry point. Also noted, in the northeastern corner, land would be dedicated for a future city water tower in the intersection of Blaine and 42. A little background on Umore Park, the US federal government acquired the land for the Gopher Ordnance Works during World War II to produce a smokeless gunpowder. Before it was fully built out, Gopher Ordnance Works was shuttered in 1945 at the end of the World War. The title to 8,000 acres of the over 12,000 acre site was transferred to the University of Minnesota in 1947 and 1948, where it remained used by the U for agricultural research. In 2008, the university developed a Umore Park concept plan for a sustainable modern community, but in 2015, the U pivoted to a more market-based approach to the development of Umore Park. That is evidenced in the sale of 435 acres to Maplewood Development for a mixed residential planned unit development in 2021. There have been a couple environmental assessments and reviews done on the site. The Umore Park Alternative Urban Area Wide Review considers several development scenarios. The AUAAR process is a hybrid of the EAW and EIS that are often used, or are often required for large projects, but the AUAAR allows for multiple scenarios to be considered and is often used over a large area, for example, Prestwick Place on the north side of 42. Once the AUAAR process is complete, future projects within its boundaries don't require individual EAWs and EIS documents. The AUAAR does need to be updated every five years to account for development that has occurred within its boundaries. Also, as part of the AUAAR process, mitigation plans are developed to... Also, as part of the AUAAR process, mitigation plans are developed to mitigate any impacts on the community within the, hosting the AUAAR. In this case, that mitigation plan was incorporated into the city's comprehensive land use plan to anticipate future development for water, sewer, transportation, and other needs. Also, in 2017, the university completed a remedial investigation under the supervision of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. On the map before you, the red dots indicate areas where contamination was found to exceed residential soil standards. The yellow dots indicate where samples were taken that did not exceed those standards. Also of note, that investigation found no groundwater contamination. So the land use of the site is designated as business park. That would be that purple color shown here in the city's comprehensive land use plan. This was incorporated into the land use plan as part of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Update. Also note, to the west, this mixed residential area that was incorporated. Now, these were the first times that land use designations other than ag research were included in the Umore Park area in anticipation of development within the boundaries. The site zoning is BP Business Park Planned Unit Development. The hatched areas are the signifier for a PUD. As you can see, many of the developments that have been occurring in recent years have been part of a planned unit development. A little more on the plat request. The, as I said earlier, the proposed plat would separate the subject property from the greater Umore Park area. The four new parcels that would be created by the plat include the large parcel that will contain the main use of the site, two parcels, one containing the substation and another for land for a future water tower, and then one parcel, which is shown as a buildable lot on the plat in the northwest corner of the site. It's anticipated to be transferred, ownership to be transferred to DCTC. That parcel should be renamed as an outlot since it doesn't meet the minimum lot standards for a buildable lot in the BP zoning district. Staff is also recommending a DNU easement over the wetland and buffer in the north central portion of the site. The wetland here is what is being referenced. There's another wetland just west that is within a drainage and utility easement. This is the parcel that should be renamed to an outlot. And then, again, this parcel here would contain the substation and this one in the northeast corner, Lot 3 Block 1, would be the home of a future water tower. Other necessary drainage and utility easements are, would be dedicated with the plat over stormwater infrastructure, as those would be part of a larger regional stormwater system. Also note, now get into it a little further. Audrey Avenue will be realigned slightly, shifting its intersection with County Road 42 to the east. That is to accommodate residents located on the other side of 42, so that if there's a future extension to the north, it would not impact that residence. So the planned unit development that was approved in March of 2023 was requested by the applicant to provide them some guidelines as they went about creating the site plan on the site. It contains the following provisions, which I will go through one by one, so that the Planning Commission does, can understand what those mean in context to the request before you. The first being a provision that would exempt substations from design regulations of the BP District. The only design regulation related to substations in that zoning district is that there would be screening provided where a substation is adjacent to a residential or commercial zoning district, which it is not in this case. A second provision would allow outdoor and mechanical equipment of a size to serve the buildings and be in relational proximity to them, so long as they don't exceed the aggregate building footprint. The zoning code limits outdoor equipment in the BP zoning district to no more than 5,000 square feet. So this is to allow the applicant to have those mechanical equipment on the site. The third provision was to increase the maximum height of accessory structures. The applicant's plans show two communication towers on site. Initially, those had been anticipated to be 80 feet tall. Those towers will be 60 feet in height. The tower themselves will be 50 feet with a 10-foot lightning rod atop each one and therefore falls within the standards of the Business Park Zoning District. The City Council also approved a provision to basically solidify an exemption from the site and building performance standards. This isn't necessarily required because the zoning code states the city may exempt outdoor structural equipment from the site and building performance standards. This just basically affirms that. The fifth provision was a deviation from the code to waive the architectural appearance and building massing standards for buildings that are greater than 300 feet from the public right-of-way. Just for context, the setbacks in the Business Park Zoning District are 30 feet from the front and 10 feet from the side and rear. So a significant increase in the setbacks if the applicant were to avoid the Business Park standards. Those are related to entry features, corner architecture, things like that. In this case, all the structures proposed would be greater than 300 feet from the property boundaries. The sixth provision included in the planned unit development was that, related to certain standards around parking, required screening, things like that. The approved provision waives that requirement for setbacks or parking areas greater than 50 feet and loading areas greater than 300 feet. The seventh was a deviation to allow rock and gravel or mulch to be used as an accent material. This is to allow the applicant to use gravel and rock and whatnot around their outdoor equipment. It would not be, it would not be beneficial to sod right up to equipment that would be getting trampled, trampled on. And therefore, that was approved by the council. The eighth provision included in there was that, related to rooftop utilities and a waiver for those for places that are greater than 300 feet away. No buildings or mechanical areas are within 300 feet of a parcel boundary. Coming up, I'll show you the exact setbacks from property boundaries. And then lastly, was a provision to allow for fences up to 14 feet in height. The applicant did provide a plan that shows a fence that is 10 feet in height on average, so long as the fence is greater than 50 feet from a public right-of-way. In this case, at its closest, the fence is 150 feet from the property boundary. So again, just a little refresher on the plans. This is an architectural site plan to give you an idea of what would be happening on the site here. And you can see the, the fence is pulled quite a ways in from the, the property boundary. Main entrance, again, would be along Blaine Avenue, where folks entering would come to the guardhouse before proceeding into the site. There is a secondary emergency access located along Audrey Avenue. This one would have a locked gate with a Knox box to allow, to allow emergency apparatus to get through there or to provide a secondary egress. Also note, there is a temporary construction access that would be used during construction of the site that would be temporary in nature and only allow for right-in, right-out maneuvers in that area. The Dakota County Plat Commission did review the proposed plat and will be recommending approval to the county commission of the plat itself to ensure that it has the approval of Dakota County right-of-way spacing requirements and access points. So this is the engineered site plan showing different setbacks from portions of the site. Again, the general business park standards are a 10-foot setback for parking from the sides and rear, or building and parking from the sides and rear, and a 30-foot setback from the front. In this case, the, the closest building would be the gatehouse and that is 600 feet from the eastern parcel boundary. The larger of the two buildings are 900 feet from 42 and 1,300 feet from Audrey Avenue. The, there is a small parking area next to one of the communication towers for maintenance workers to park. That's 1,000 feet from the western parcel boundary. At its closest point, the substation down below is 192 feet from the southern parcel boundary. I also want to note that the building itself here to the intersection of Audrey Avenue and 42 is about 1,585 feet, while the mechanical areas to Audrey Avenue are 1,750 feet. With regards to building material and massing, the two main function buildings, they will be 27 feet 2 inches tall. Building 3, which is the kind of support building, that'll be 35 feet 6 inches tall. And Building 4, which is the office, that will be 19 feet tall. They are all one-story buildings and they all fall within the maximum building height in the Business Park Zoning District of 50 feet. So here are the building of the elevations. I understand it's pretty hard to see because they are long, low buildings. So the next slide will be zoomed in a little bit more. But the materials used will be formed metal panels and precast architectural concrete. There'll be some vertical, it'll be kind of a vertical treatment to break up those extended walls. There will also be some windows and, and entries near the parking lots in the north portion of each building. Here is Building 2, which is a little smaller than the first one and features similar materials as well with a enlarged area in the lower left corner. Here's a little close-up to that enlarged area on Building 1. And then another close-up of that enlarged area on Building 2. Building 3 will be a metal panel wall system as its exterior materials. This is more of a utilitarian-type building. While Building 4 is an office building, it'll have formed metal panels, as well as precast architectural concrete that is used vertically with more windows and glazing, which is reflective of its office use. And then lastly, the guardhouse, which is only about 260 square feet in area, will be finished with metal composite material and security glazed curtain walls. And again, that is kind of near the entrance on that eastern portion. So, the outdoor equipment on the site, the Business Park Zoning District regulations limit outdoor equipment to no more than 500, or 5,000 square feet in area. But with the approved PUD, that allows for outdoor equipment to, in size, to sufficiently serve the buildings, but again, not to exceed the aggregate building footprint. We wouldn't want the mechanical areas to be the principal use on the site. So the aggregate building footprint on the site is 727,000 square feet, while the mechanical equipment areas total 387,000 feet. And that is including any sort of yard around those mechanical areas. If you were just using the equipment itself, the total would be 187,224 square feet. The site parking, the applicant did provide the site plan with a, with a table for parking. Based on the size of the buildings, 364 stalls would be required. The applicant is providing 283 stalls. Through conversations with staff, the applicant indicated that following construction, full-time jobs would be around 50, with up to 100 ancillary jobs, people coming in to, to do other work on the site. Because there's a, a lot of site dedicated to contractor lay-down areas and parking, there's sufficient area on the site to add more parking if needed or if the use were to change to a more manufacturing or something like that. I do want to go back just really briefly to point out those contractor lay-down areas. And those are the hatched marks here that say reserved for contractor space. So there's this one on the west, here on the north, and then there's some here on the east as well. Landscaping and tree preservation. The applicant did provide a pretty substantial landscaping plan, as well as an inventory of all existing trees on the site. Based on the area of the site and the requirement of one tree per 3,000 square feet, 3,000, or 3,628 trees are required for this development. The city code does allow for existing trees to count toward the tree, that tree planting requirement. And based on a 2.5 cal per inch planting, the site, or the trees remaining on site, which is about 50% of them, would equal 7,553 trees. So staff finds that that requirement is met. Now, while the applicant is keeping 50% of the trees on the site, they are removing a significant amount as well. And the way the city's tree preservation ordinance classifies trees, it does so in two different ways. It classifies some trees as significant trees, and those are hardwoods greater than 6 inches in diameter, softwoods greater than 12 inches in diameter, or coniferous trees greater than 12, 12 feet tall. The city's tree preservation ordinance also defines heritage trees as hardwoods greater than 27 inches in diameter or conifers greater than 50 feet in diameter. Now developers are allowed to remove up to 25% of the trees on a site before they have to start replacing them. I should say, 25% of the significant trees on site before they start replacing them. So based on the 19,361 inches of significant trees on the site, the applicant would be able to remove 4,840 inches. The applicant is proposing to remove 8342, which means the difference of 3,502 must be replaced and the code requires a replacement at .5 to 1. So the replacement requirement of significant trees is 1,751 inches. For heritage trees, every heritage tree removed has to be replaced at a one-to-one ratio. In this case, of the 13,125 inches of heritage trees, 6,656 inches are going to be removed for development. That's a total of 8,407 inches of replacement requirement. The applicant is proposing to plant 1,834 inches of trees, leaving a shortfall, which the applicant, in accordance with the provisions of the city code, is asking to pay a fee in lieu of. The city code allows for developers to pay a fee in lieu of replacement when there is an inability to find space for replacement trees or if the site itself is incompatible with planting trees. In this case, the significant stormwater ponding requires land where trees cannot be planted. There's maintenance areas and mechanical equipment areas that are places where trees cannot be planted. So staff is recommending payment of $900,020 in lieu of replacing those trees. So here's that landscape plan the applicant did provide. As you can see, there's, trees are planted around all the stormwater infiltration areas, filling in some of the gaps in the woodlands that will be retained and then as well as just kind of creating some screening along the public rights of way. The applicant's landscape plan shows some foundations, foundation plantings in the visible areas of the site, but their landscape plan doesn't include a planting schedule to confirm that the number of foundation plantings meet the minimum requirements of one foundation planting per 10 linear feet of building perimeter. So for this one, staff is recommending a condition of approval that that be updated, just so that we can get a better count on what those foundation plantings would look like. The landscaping will take, will occur in phases due to the construction schedule of the site. The green areas will be landscaped as soon as grading is complete. The orange areas in the central, center are Phase 2. Some of that area will be landscaped concurrently with Phase 1. And then the red areas are Phase 3, and these are the reserved contractor areas where, where those will be restored and landscaped following completion of the construction of the site. One note on the foundation plants, based on the linear feet of building perimeter, 718 foundation plantings would be required as part of this. The applicant provided some imagery of security fence that would be built on the site. It's a non-climbable wire mesh that is painted black, that is 10 feet in height. The PUD allows for up to 14-foot-high fences with a 50-foot setback from the property lines. The fence is set back 150 feet from the property line and its nearest point, which is on the southern portion near the substations. The applicant also provided a lighting plan. The lighting on the site will be pole-mounted at 27 and 1/2 feet tall. That is within the 30-foot maximum, and that lighting will be placed along all of the internal drives on the site. There are street improvements that are components of this project. The applicant would be responsible for the reconstruction of Audrey Avenue, including the realignment, and Blaine Avenue, as well as the inclusion of a twelve-inch water main in Audrey Avenue and a sixteen-inch main in Blaine Avenue. During construction, Dakota County did approve a temporary signal light that will be installed at the intersection of Blaine Avenue and County Road forty-two to accommodate construction traffic. It's anticipated during construction to generate two-hundred-and-forty-one trips in the AM peak hour and three-hundred-and-sixty-seven trips in the PM peak hour. Those are between seven and eight and four-thirty and five-thirty PM. Between six and seven, it's expected to produce six-hundred-and-ten trips coming into the site. Here are the alignments. They don't line up, so I apologize for that top part not working perfectly there, but you can see the realignment of Audrey Avenue as it shifts eastward to allow for a future extension north without impacting that residence on the other side of the road. And then Blaine Avenue on the east here. Audrey Avenue will have a bituminous trail on the western side of that roadway and a five-foot concrete sidewalk on the eastern portion of that road. And that is in line with the university's design standards for anyone wishing to develop within Umore Park. Blaine Avenue as well as County Road forty-two will be graded to accommodate a future paved trail, but it wouldn't be constructed with that site. Also note that the west side of Blaine Avenue will get improvements like curb and gutter, storm sewer. The eastern side will be a more rural, rural design with just a shoulder going to a ditch, which will be upgraded when development occurs east of Blaine Avenue. The water plan for the site has a six-inch water main connecting to the twelve-inch main that would be constructed in Audrey Avenue and another connection here to Blaine Avenue. And sewer will be collected in the site and then connect to Met Council's system in the northwest corner at Audrey Avenue and forty-two. The storm sewer on the site will collect water and move it to a series of ponds. These ponds will be regional and handle more water than just the site itself. And when, as they fill up, the water will kind of move in a counterclockwise pattern before finally releasing in the eastern portion of the site to be connected at some point as development occurs further east. I had mentioned the two wetlands located in the northern portion of the site. They are both classified as managed two. The city's comprehensive wetland management plan classifies different wetlands within the city based on things like water clarity, biodiversity, and things like that. The top being preserve, manage one is just below that, manage two, and then lastly, manage three. Manage two wetlands require a thirty-foot buffer, and that also requires a dedication of a drainage and utility easement and conservation easements over those wetland areas. And that is included as conditions of approval in staff's recommendation. With regards to parks and trails, anytime there's a subdivision of land, the city's park dedication requirements come into play. The code requires ten percent of land of any new subdivision be dedicated for parks. Because no parks are planned for this development area, a fee in lieu of land shall be provided. And based on the size of the project, ten percent of two-hundred-and-sixty-five acres is twenty-six point five. At eighty-five thousand dollars per acre results in two-million-two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred-dollar park dedication fee the applicant would have to pay for the subdivision of the site. As I said, there will be a trail constructed along the west side of Audrey Avenue and frontage along forty-two and Blaine would be graded for future trails. The city held an open house on November fifteenth to provide some of the plans that were received with the applicant's submittal and to receive feedback. The most common comments heard were concerns about the water usage and electrical needs on the site. The anticipated amount of water used by the site is planned for in the city's comprehensive plan. It was planned for following the A U A R that was created and adopted by the council for the Umore Park area. The applicant anticipates the water usage to be in line with a few sit-down restaurants or half of a one-hundred-room hotel on an average basis. Obviously, that fluctuates just like anybody's water meter does here in the city. With regards to power and electricity, the city did approve a transmission line to extend from Inver Grove Heights down along Rich Valley Boulevard to Blaine Avenue to the substation to serve this site and development in the area. Staff also heard about EMF radiation. The levels of EMF radiation generated by the one-hundred-and-fifteen kilovolts that would be coming to the site is below the threshold that has been shown to create magnetic effects that may cause problems for pacemakers and other devices. The four-hundred kilovolts is kind of the threshold for that. Noise was another concern, particularly low-frequency noise. The applicant chose the site because of its large size, the ability to create large setbacks as buffer. And then also, an acoustic engineering firm conducted a noise study that predicts the noise levels to be below the thresholds of the MPCA, depending on the different uses and testing going on on the site. Also, the one-third octave band data were evaluated. It verified the absence of low-frequency noise concerns. That one-third octave band, the measurements are mainly used in environmental and noise control applications. They provide a further in-depth look at noise levels across frequency composition. So the mix of frequencies and equipment selected for the site were confirmed to not contain low-frequency pure tones and has not been associated with disruption to wildlife. Staff is recommending approval of this based on a review of the city's ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and the approved planned unit development for the site. Staff finds that it does meet the requirements of the code, subject to the conditions listed. As with any subdivision, approval of a subdivision that outlines the city's and developers' responsibilities during the development of the site. Payment of the fee in lieu of parkland dedication. Payment of all required development fees. Those are the trunk area charges that go towards the ongoing maintenance of the city sewer and water system, and those are collected with any subdivision. The plat should be updated to dedicate a drainage and utility easement over the wetland and its associated buffer and conservation easements shall be dedicated over the two onsite wetlands and their buffer areas. With regards to the final site and building plan, staff also is recommending approval of that, subject to the conditions listed before you. The first being approval of the plat. Submittal of a landscape surety, this is in the amount of one-hundred-and-ten percent of the cost of the trees on the site, and that would be returned after one year of survival. If a tree does die before that one year, it has to be replaced, and that clock starts again. Payment of nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in lieu of replacement trees. Temporary parking in contractor lay-down areas shall be restored and landscaped. This is just reiterating that fact for the applicant and for the record. Also, the temporary construction access from County Road forty-two shall be removed and the right-of-way restored following construction. As I had mentioned earlier, the landscape plan shall be updated to include the foundation planting schedule that meets the requirements of the city code. In that, in that case, it was seven-hundred-and-eighty-some. And then finally, the applicant has not indicated that they would be installing any signage on the site, but if they would, similar to any other project, signed permits are approved administratively by staff and the, an application for such would need to be submitted if the applicant does wish to put signage on the site. And the last two are just conformance with the requirements of the city engineer and the fire marshal, and those are related to general design of the stormwater infrastructure to ensure they meet the needs of the city going forward. So with that, I am happy to take any questions. I know we have representatives from Xcel Energy, the University of Minnesota, and representatives for the applicant here, as well as city staff who can kind of...
Thank you, Anthony. Can you go back to that last page you had up with the recommendations? I apologize for not catching this earlier, but do we need to call out the change of that outlot or not? Or is that kind of tied into that approval of the subdivision agreement?
That should be in the first one, excuse me. That should be in the first one, I think when I was putting together the sheet.
Okay.
Because it is on the...
I just want to be sure that we...
Yeah, make sure you add that to the recommended action.
Okay, thank you. So we would have six...
Thank you for finding that.
Yeah, yeah, and I apologize for not catching it earlier. We would have six conditions then for the first one, thank you. And that was block...
Lot two, lot one, block two.
Block, lot one, block two.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of questions and clarifications. I just want to make sure that I have my understanding on, and then I'll turn it over to the commissioners for any of their questions. A temporary light is going to be constructed for construction, and there's the construction access. Do we have any idea, I know maybe this is better for the applicant, but length of construction or anticipated length?
Based on the conversation staff has had, the expectation would be three to five years.
And that, I would assume that that light will stay up that duration of that time, correct?
Correct, correct.
And then the water usage, you mentioned this, but it's comparable to a few dine-in restaurants. And it, we, we did account for this water usage with that business park designation of this land in our comprehensive plan. So from a city perspective, we are prepared to accommodate this. And if we had other business park developments in there, it's likely that they would, this is a huge amount of property. So if we had normal business park development with the ten-foot and thirty-foot setbacks, we obviously would see potentially a lot more buildings in there and a lot more users that would probably equate to similar water use or more?
Well, I wouldn't want to speculate, but certainly the site could be much more efficiently developed, which would likely result in greater water usage on an overall scale. And then I would just note that the city's comprehensive plan is, plans out, you know, our needs twenty years into the future.
Right, right. So we've planned it for, for in the future.
Right.
In the staff report, it noted that the noise levels were two to fifteen decibels or one to fifteen decibels below, and so that's below the, the max threshold for noise. It's...
Right, it's like sixty-five decibels, I think, is the max.
Is the max allowed.
And I would defer to the, maybe the applicant's consultant who can speak to that a little bit further than I could.
Thank you. And then I think this is going to be more a question for the, for Xcel Energy possibly, but electrical use, I know that they're going to provide electrical for it. I've heard some concerns about, about concerns to residents electrical based on this use. I'm guessing more a question for Xcel Energy.
Yeah, you know, all I can say is that they went through the Public Utility Commission process to get approval to serve such a large site. They certainly can speak to that much better than I can.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from other commissioners? Commissioner Reed?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. First of all, just for context, I want to thank you, Anthony. You know, we had the first review of the master plan several months ago. A lot of Q and A then, very well answered. Conditions we raised at that time included. We got the packets, one-hundred-and-fifty pages this, this one. We had an opportunity to go through that, provide questions in advance. So there's already been some, thank you, because you already included most of my answers in your presentation, so thank you. So not a lot, right, at this point? One is for the, the traffic, the temporary signal is going to be at Blaine, correct? But then there's also going to be this, the temporary construction exit here, sort of in the middle of the lot.
Yep, yep.
How do we, can you explain, is most of the traffic going to go to the signal direction, and what's the purpose of that one?
I think it's more of a matter of the more access points, the better during construction to allow for those sorts of movements to occur. And then that signal light, yes, it is, is temporary for the construction. If development occurs in that area, that would generate traffic needs, that would warrant a permanent light there. The, it is planned for in the county's County Road forty-two corridor to have a light at some point should needs be met or warranted.
Okay. But then the volume of traffic in that temporary, that'll be monitored in some way so that it doesn't become an issue? And more of it is routed to the light, the signal?
Yeah, we would want to make sure that their traffic movements are in line with what would be best for that site. And certainly, anytime there's a development occurring, we're working hand-in-hand with developers to ensure that if something does arise, that we can, you know, correct it in a timely manner. We have inspectors on site, construction inspectors on site and things like that that would be able to identify some issues as well.
Okay. And in the traffic study, it notes including volume from RVGC and Project Channel, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so Rich Valley, I think RVGC is referring to Rich Valley Golf Course, which is the FedEx site.
Okay.
Project Channel was a, another codename project on the north side of forty-two. It is staff's understanding that that is not moving forward. That went through the A U A R process and was anticipated to be a distribution use. So I think they were planning on including that as well in their analysis.
Okay, so the analysis is very comprehensive, it included that additional, excellent.
More than just this, this site alone.
Okay. I think that's all I had at this point.
Comments from other commissioners? Mr. Whitman?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Anthony. Super helpful, really, really nice work with that presentation. I was not here for the initial approval, so I'm kind of coming in and midstream. So thanks for bearing with me as I try to get smart on all this. First of all, this is the only public hearing for this matter, tonight at the Planning Commission. There will be no public hearing associated with this item when it moves forward to the city council. Is that correct?
Right, right. Public hearings are usually held before the Planning Commission. There are some items that do get a public hearing before the council, but typically, any items that come to the Planning Commission do not get a public hearing before the council. And it has occurred in the past where they do receive comment, but I do know that all of the council members watch every Planning Commission meeting, either in real time or the recording after the fact, prior to their council meeting.
Got it. And that's, and that's just following, following what's required under state law, right?
Right.
There needs to be one public hearing, and the city's policy is to have that public hearing here at the Planning Commission rather than later at the city council.
Sure, that's what the code calls for.
Okay. Thank you. The, so I want to talk a little about the environmental review associated with it, and, and thank you for including that information in your presentation. So, and I've watched the city council meetings, and so I've heard, heard comments and concerns of residents the past whatever couple of months at, at the meetings. So I, so I understand, you know, the, the topics. And I've heard some concerns about environmental, and so that, you know, kind of raised my antennas a little bit. So as I understand it, this project is not subject to an environmental assessment worksheet or an environmental impact statement because there was a alternative urban area-wide review, a document that's basically a blend of an EAW and an EIS. It's a little more, it's more comprehensive than an EAW, and it, it's kind of encapsulates both of those?
Correct, correct. Yes, and it evaluates different development scenarios. So without getting in the details of the A U A R scenarios, you know, one scenario had residential in this part and business park over here, and it was kind of, there were different scenarios for the development of the site. And it, A U A Rs look at different scenarios, which is more than an EAW, which is very site and project-specific.
Got it. And then that reliance on the A U A R is, that's something allowed by state law as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. I looked at the A U A R and, and I looked at the rules as well, and I see that you can rely on that as long as it's updated, I think every five years, right? And so it was originally, the original document was two thousand thirteen. It was updated again in October two thousand eighteen.
Right.
With an effective date, I think August two thousand eighteen or something like that. Has that been updated again?
The update's in process.
Okay.
The updates are really to... The updates are really to incorporate any development that has occurred within the AUAR area, AUAR area since the last, since adoption or the last update. So for the 2018 update, there weren't, there wasn't a lot of changes because there wasn't a lot, there was no development. So the new update that's currently in process will incorporate the Amber Fields development in there. And basically it's just saying, this was developed this way, and this, and it, it is in line with the AUAR's anticipated scenarios. And so, um, following the process for this, this would be incorporated also into the AUAR update as well for development.
Got it, and I, and I just want to be sure that if this were to be approved, the city can lawfully do that with respect to environmental review because that AUAR is, is it still valid, I guess is my question? Has that five years expired or because it's in effect? Yeah.
It would, it'd be the end of this year.
So it goes to the end, it's not five years on the dot?
Right. There's no like AUAR police that's out there to, to check on the updates and things like that. But certainly it is referenced by staff on a regular basis and is, continues to be relevant for the environmental review of the site.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Whitman, you know, and the, the city did consult with our consultants who do review these environmental documents on the city's behalf, because staff here tonight aren't subject matter experts in environmental law or those specific components. We do contract with an outside consulting service who works on the city's behalf to make sure that all of those documents that are either updated or in line as a part of this development process are in accordance with, with the rules and the law.
Excellent, and so there was no concern from the?
No.
From those consultants, excellent, and that, and that's, that's, that's what I was getting at, okay. The, the slide with like the yellow and red dots, so you got the square and there's soil contamination with the red dots. Yellow equals you drilled and didn't find any contamination. I think you're madly looking for it right now.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Not so madly, you're doing nice and smooth.
I don't need it, I've seen it plenty.
There it is, so, yeah, so that red ref, that references the boundary of the property, the site. And so it's all yellow in there, there's no red, and red would be the contamination.
Right.
And was there any, is, was there any sort of evidence out there suggesting maybe that red could migrate into that area? Flow underground into that area, anything like that?
Well, I would defer to the University of Minnesota who owns the property. I would also assume that the developer of the site would do their own due diligence. Certainly they wouldn't buy a, buy a property with contamination on it. And I, I do know that the university specifically has chosen this site, the site immediately east, and the site where Amber Fields is being developed because there was no contamination in those areas. But again, I would defer to the U on that one.
Got it, okay, thank you. And final question right now, of course, I, again, I've listened to the concerns of residents. I've watched the City Council meetings, and there's concerns about the end user. I know our purview here is not to make judgment about an end user. We, we're, we're here to look at the requirements that are necessary for getting this entitlement approved under our code and under state law. And if those requirements are met, then is it right that we basically have to recommend approve? Or the City Council has to approve?
I would defer to the city's attorney on that.
Madam Chair Commissioners, that's right, there's not a significant amount of discretion, if any at all, on these types of decisions because you're sitting in a quasi judicial capacity determining whether the proposal meets the established criteria.
Got it, that's, thank you very much, and then so just to kind of make it a little more specific of a question, if we as commissioners or council members, or the council members eventually had a concern about a specific end user, would we have the lawful authority to deny the project simply because of concerns over that end user?
Chair Commissioners, the, the law requi, geez, the law requires that the city, including the Planning Commission and the council, treat all applicants similarly, sort of regardless of, you know, who they might be. For the Planning Commission in particular, it's, you know, does this proposal meet the requirements as established for this type of project? Yes, that's the answer. You're, you're, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could, what, you know, maybe one example that I've used in talking with a lot of these residents at the public open house and, and otherwise, it helps me kind of understand this kind of the who versus the what example is, you know, folks may have, or City Council or Planning Commission or residents may have an opinion about, let's say McDonald's or Burger King, that they're making us all overweight and they're giving us all heart disease. That may be true, that may not be true, you know, I go to McDonald's as much as anyone, so I'm not here to disparage McDonald's, but you get my point. The City Council is not allowed to say McDonald's is giving us heart disease, Burger King Chipotle is giving us heart disease, we're going to decline at Chipotle. We look at the brick, we look at the glass, we look at the parking, we look at the landscaping, and so that's an example that has helped me, I guess, as, as I've explained this, and maybe it resonates with, with folks and Commissioner Whitman too. I know you understand that, but I'm just kind of doubling down or taking this opportunity to use that, that analogy, because that, that is the purview of a, of a, of a city government. It is folks in different levels of government that, that address those things, Food and Drug Administration, the FTC on, on issues of, of, you know, social media, electronic use and things of that nature. So folks that are beyond the purview of, of city government certainly would, would consider those types of things.
Got it, thank, thank you both, and thank you again, Anthony. I'll likely have some other questions and comments, interesting to hear the public and their comments as well, but that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitman. Are there any other questions from the commissioners?
I just had one too, and maybe it, again, I will be corrected if it's not a question I should be asking, but in reading some of the... Oh, sorry, I moved it. In reading some of the concerns, and because I do contracts for a living, I know we have like an agreement, let's say with lifetime for its lifetime here, or its minimum lifetime here. Is there some type of agreement with the city per se that they have to have this facility or they have to have a lifespan of a minimum amount so that the residents aren't going to say, you built this big facility and you're here 10 years and you're, you're going goodbye? That's my question, is, is there a, an agreement or a contract per se with the city to have a minimum amount of time that you have to be here to make it worth our while for everybody?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rivera, no. This is a private-to-private land transaction that's being considered, and so to maybe reiterate what our city administrator and city attorney said, you know, that the purview is to review the application and the materials based on their, their plating and their other requests as it relates to the city code. So no, there wouldn't be any other type of contractual arrangement about the end user between the city. The city does not own this land, the University of Minnesota currently owns this land, and the sale that would be considered between those two private parties would be up to them to negotiate those terms between them.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Thank you, Anthony. At this time, we will move on to the public hearing portion for this item this evening. I will invite the applicant to come forward and speak if they would like, as well as representatives with the applicant, the university, Excel Energy and anyone else with the applicant. I do also want to just share that we did receive a couple of letters that were provided to us by city staff that were sent in as part of the public hearing process. You can send in emails or letters, and we have received those, and they've been provided to the members of the Planning Commission for review as well. And please state, when you do come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
All right, Madam Chair Commissioners, thank you. My name is Trish C. with Kimley Horn and Associates, consultant on behalf of the applicant. My address is 767 Eastus Street in St. Paul. First of all, thank you all for the time tonight, thank you, Anthony, for the presentation. I mostly will just be here to help answer questions, but the one thing that I heard that I do want to respond directly on right now is about the noise limit. So Minnesota, it's a Minnesota state statute that determines the noise limit, and it's different depending on if it's to a residential or a commercial property in day or night, but essentially the most restrictive part of it is to a residential property at night, and that's 50 decibels. So we stay under that. So otherwise, I will sit down and I will be here for any more questions.
And Trish, we did have a couple of questions, and I don't know if you've got someone on your team or if you can answer these. The contamination study and the potential migration from the contaminated spots, any concerns with that? And then also on the electrical usage and impact to residents?
Yep, sure, I'll speak to that contamination a little bit, just from the, the, the user's standpoint. So we certainly did our due diligence in all of our environmental studies, and we didn't have any recognized environmental conditions from a Phase 1 ESA standpoint, and didn't have any evidence that if the groundwater would migrate towards our site. There's obviously a large amount of money being invested here, and so with that due diligence, the end user has felt comfortable moving on with the property.
Thank you.
Yep, and I will let, I think Leslie from the university will help answer that question as well.
Madam, madam, okay, I'll try again. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name, my name is Leslie Krieger, sorry, I'm going to be leaning here. And my, I work for the University of Minnesota, I'm the Assistant Vice President for Planning Space and Real Estate, and my address is 319 15th Avenue Southeast Minneapolis. In direct question related to the environmental contamination on the site, this is the historic, the historic use for the entire Umar Park property was the Gopher Ordnance Works during World War II. The university has done extensive studies under the supervision of the MPCA, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, to understand the environmental issues on the site. The boards out in the hallway that we used at the public open house, there is one board that shows the historic uses, historic aerial photographs for the site, and as city staff mentioned, the reasons why we're marketing, currently marketing this site, as well as the site directly to the east, as well as the site that became Amber Fields, is because those are the clean sites because they had not, did not have any of the historic smokeless gunpowder production going on, on those properties. So we have done extensive remedial investigation, and the QR code that's on one of the boards links directly to the university's, all of the environmental studies that have been done by the university on our online repository. But getting to your question, the, there are no, there were no, and we have not determined any sort of soil contamination above residential soil standards, which are the most conservative in this property, and the, there are, there is contamination directly to the south of that property, of the property, which is why the li, the property boundary was drawn where it is. And, but those are heavy metals, shallow soils, contamination, no groundwater contamination was found, so we're not concerned about any sort of movement of the contamination in the area.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, my name's Jake Andre, I'm on Excel Energy's Corporate Economic Development Team. Very excited to be speaking here tonight, and thank you for your time, thank you, Anthony, for the presentation. Wanted to address some of the concerns related to capacity, reliability, generation, some of those concerns that I discussed directly with some of the folks at the open house a couple of weeks ago. And just wanted to talk through kind of what the process looks like whenever we receive inquiry of this size and scale. Effectively receiving an application, and we spend months, our internal transmission planning, our resource planning teams to ensure that the solution that we derive for the proposed project, you know, is not to any detriment of the surrounding community or the, the given region that it's going to be sited in. Additionally, there's, there's many stage gates and checkpoints with other regional, state, as well as federal agencies that kind of oversee transmission interconnections, being that we are part of a independent system operator, regional transmission system. You know, there's checkpoints throughout the process to ensure that we're making the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, as well as MISO, who's our independent system operator, aware of this project. Additionally, we have stage gates and updates within our agreements with the project team to ensure that they're giving us the most up-to-date, accurate forecast to ensure that we can plan and prepare for this type of load coming onto our system. There are concerns about, you know, this, this, this customer coming in and effectively sapping up all the energy or electricity that was in the given area. That is not at all a concern, we, as I'd stated, we, we spend months planning for this type of project. Additionally, there are some, some questions regarding generation, is this going to result in Excel Energy having to site wind turbines and solar panels all over the city of Rosemont, and that's absolutely, again, not the case. I went in to have conversations with other members or other folks at the open house, just talking about where we're seeing a lot of those generation projects on our system. You know, we're rapidly and trying to gradually shift our generation portfolio away from traditional fossil fuels to a more renewable intermittent generation source, and so I went on to talk about some of our active projects in southwestern Minnesota, as well as up in Becker, our, our large 700-plus megawatt solar development. And so there's no new directly correlated generation that's as a result or tied to this project or any way. We effectively have capacity on our system to accommodate this load. Additionally, the project team is, is paying for all those upgrades and new line extensions upfront to us, so there's no cost rested on the general rate base shoulders. Additionally, I might add, you know, it certainly is not going to provide or result in any outages or any, you know, interruptions to electric service for any of the residents nearby. In fact, the, the upgrades and the extensions that they're paying for will likely make the area that much more resilient and resistant to storms, outages, things like that.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open up the public hearing for anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening. You may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes in time, and in order to move through it quickly, if, if someone is speaking and someone wants to queue up behind them, that is just fine as well. We'll keep the public hearing moving this evening so that we can hear everyone that is here that would like to speak tonight. And so with that, I will open up the podium. So we have our first member coming up, I will also ask the audience to hold your applause just so that we can continue to move through, through speakers quickly. Thank you, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for your time tonight undertaking this very serious proposal, and thank you for being willing to listen to our comments. So, my name is Karen Miller, I live at 17985 Jakard Path, Lakeville, Minnesota. So I come here to stand with residents of Rosemount and Dakota County who have very serious concerns about this gymnast proposal. And here, here they are, I'd also, I appreciate your response, but also would like that response in writing, please. First of all, water impact, where are the vast amounts of water to run and cool the data center going to come from? How does the water demand of this data center fit in with the already existing Waterton restrictions? Will this data center result in water rationing for residents? Number two, energy impact, where is the electricity to run the data center going to come from? Will Rosemount citizens suffer electrical outages to keep this data center going? How does this, how does building this massive data center fit into the 2040 carbon-based energy ban? When we run out of electricity, who will be the first to be cut, residents, furnaces, or the data center's servers? And I understand that there is going to be a new water tower and substation put in, but who is paying the, the cost for that? Third concern, EMF impact, you know, our human bodies are an antenna, both, an antenna, both sending and receiving signals. So how will the presence of a massive data center sending, receiving, storing vast amounts of electrical data impact the EMF radiation on Rosemount residents living proximate to the proposed data center? Number four, privacy concern, exactly what data will be collected and harvested? How will it be used? How will the privacy of the residents be protected? Number five, youth impact, Facebook is currently being sued by the Attorney Generals of 42 states, including our own state, by our own Attorney General Keith Ellison, for its manipulative and damaging social media impact on minors. Do we really want to host an organization that's having such a detrimental impact on the next generation? Number six, the shroud of secrets... Number six, the shroud of secrecy and the lack of transparency. Why has this, the name and the nature of this company been hidden from the public? Why have citizens' questions not been answered? When we've asked them, city council members and the mayor has said, "I'm sorry, we can't tell you that because we are under a non-disclosure agreement." Why? Final questions. Number seven, do you really know who you are doing business with? I have some very specific questions. Number one, what level of US government are you working with? Number two, does this proposal involve any partnerships or collaborations with any foreign entities? And number three, regarding Gymnast LLC, do you know fully who they represent? Who are their partners, affiliates, investors, and Board of Directors? And in final comment, I want to be clear that no resident of Rosemont or of Dakota County wants big government or big tech moving into our neighborhood as our newest big brother. So after hearing these concerns, if you have any inkling of concern, any inkling of doubt, or if there is any fact or information that you do not have to adequately address these concerns, then I would urge you that you cannot, in due diligence and in good faith conscience, vote to approve this proposal. So thank you for your consideration of these questions and for answering them tonight for all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chad Bairstow, for I spoke before. Got three main points that I'd like to bring up. First is in regards to the variances to architecture, variances to setbacks, variance for rooftop utilities. I'm here in my private capacity. I work at Flint Hills Resources. We're required to meet all the architectural requirements because it's facing the public roadway. We've put in a lot of money for actual brick, actual siding, actual architectural things that need to be done. I would, I guess, as a person, I would ask for fair play there, that, hey, look, we're the big brother that's been here for 70 years up the road. We gotta do it, why don't they? Type of thing, just, but that's me as a, as a private citizen. Number two, I guess I want to address a little bit of the environmental. So we have a company coming in for a data center, Gymnast Incorporated, and they're talking about putting in, what I've heard, some way 35 megawatts, somewhere in there of electrical coming in. What about the, the green side of this that everybody brings up? You know, Flint Hills Resources just put in their own private solar that they're taking care of, they're not on the grid, they're not selling back, they're not doing anything to take care of that in terms of environmental initiatives. This sounds just like a power suck that says, hey, we're just gonna take energy from Xcel for the purposes of doing this business. I don't, I don't see any 2020, 2030, 2040, whatever you want to call it, included in this type of plan when they're gonna be using that amount of electricity. I have specific comments on the, on the construction of the plans, but that's just because I'm a project manager, I've done this for a while, I don't think this is quite the forum to do that. Lastly, kind of summing up discussions I've had, and echoing the previous commenter, it seems like this is a, an industrial project with megawatts of electricity that's falling under a business park type of plan, which seems like they're kind of skating on the edge of industrial versus business park. They're using the AUAR, I can't remember the acronym, it seems like, to have one public review of this at a planning commission on a Tuesday just after Thanksgiving, right before this AUAR environmental review comes to close at the end of 2023, and the new one is then gonna be, you know, put in place or reviewed. It seems like it's kind of skating on the edge of, should this, is this actually a business park activity, or is this more of a, or an industrial type of activity? And why is it that we can only have one public hearing with an open house, as opposed to, if you have all these people here that have questions, I think that speaks to a lot of, hey, there's some concern here, and there's questions that aren't necessarily being addressed. So those would be my comments, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this item tonight?
My name is Alan Bartel, and I've been a lifelong resident of Rosemont. I live on 4042 151st Street West in Rosemont. I've worked, I've lived in this town all my life, and I've seen, and I've been out on the university property many times. And I know, back when I was working, there was a time when that land out there was contaminated, and they had to set up an incinerator to burn the soil, because of some company out there that leaked PCBs into the ground. And I'm questioning, what is going on with this new facility that they want to build? That area was maybe not part of it, but that soil should be examined, tested, and everything, not just take their word for it. It should be done. And another two is the traffic on High County Road 42. That's gonna be a real mess out there for the residents of Rosemont trying to go to Hastings, in Grove, they want to use Highway 52. That's gonna be a real mess with all the traffic that's gonna be going on there. There should have been a further study done on all this. And two, I question the water out there. The water, I know when the powder plant was going on, they used an underground system to transfer water from the Mississippi River in Hastings to the powder plants back then. And I know, because my father worked out there at the powder plant during World War II, when they were in the development, and he told me many stories about what went on out there. So I'm just questioning that this permit should be denied to this company. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Brown. I am a resident of Eagan, Minnesota. My kids went to school at Rosemont Middle School, Elementary, and to the high school. My address is 4425 Summer Court, Eagan, Minnesota. I want to basically piggyback on this gentleman's comment regarding the soil. My son, as well as many, many youth in the Rosemont area, used Rosemont, Umore Park, for sort of a nighttime playground, if you will, as youth will do with motorcycles, snowmobiles, and the like. This was approximately 10 years ago, when my son was bringing back handfuls with his friends of lead pellets, and they would go into these underground bunkers that are on Umore facilities. The kids will play, they're spray paint, and they have pictures on Facebook and everywhere. So I would like to, more than these University of Minnesota employees, I would like there to be some type of testing done, because I can tell you that there are many people in the Rosemont community that can testify to their children doing activities as boys will do and girls will do nighttime adventures, and there were lead pellets and all types of soil, arsenic. In the library, at the Rosemont Library, I'm, by the way, a teacher as well. I am no longer teaching in the community, but I was a teacher in the Rosemont area. And in the library, at the Rosemont Library, I used to be able to go get a video that would tell about the history of Umore Park. One gentleman testified and said that it was acquired, I'll tell you how it was acquired. Farmers in the 1940s were told they were, their land was purchased, and probably many of these people's ancestors, that land was purchased, and for a very cheap price, and a lot of these farmers had to move out. Then they moved into another parcel of land, and that, that land was purchased as well from the state of Minnesota because it was for a war effort. So that land, we do not, this community wants a say in this thing, not the committee. The community wants a say whether this Facebook, I don't know if it's a done deal or not, but we want a say as a community, because it will affect us in Eagan as well. So as, as a community, I would like, number one, that you, that you test that soil, because I can tell you, there's some stuff in that. The kids brought it home, all of them, and I'm sure some other people could testify. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm at 15615 Eddy Creek Way in Apple Valley, and I spoke to many of you at the open house, and thank you for having this hearing. My concern is for this beautiful community and for your health, because I know about electromagnetic fields, and this electricity in this data center is going to be a monstrosity for our health. We are covered in heavy metals. Whether you like it or not, it's not a choice like going to McDonald's or Burger King. People have brought up heavy metals. They are in our bodies regardless, doing detoxes or not. When we have high levels of electromagnetic field, it activates illness, inflammation, diseases. There's been studies on rats and mice with the Institute of Health, there's, they've admitted with the WHO that they haven't done enough research, and that's a problem, not doing a third-party research on not only the soil, but electromagnetic fields, and how much of it's ionized or not ionized. Is it dirty or is it clean? This is not just for the community, it's for you guys too. Do you want to see your children sick? You know, that is a valid question for our community to stay healthy. And why are we doing business with someone like Karen said, when we're in a lawsuit, and now we're dipping into letting them come onto our soil, and they're distributing our data to WHO? That's a real concern. I mean, look at the world right now, and we're having a lot of wars, and our information is getting sold to WHO. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item?
Hi, Michael Plakarek, 13572 Delwood Way, Rosemont. So listening to this whole presentation, the first thing I was hit with was pretty much a underhanded legal threat to the city, to this, to the, to the planning commission here, is that if this doesn't get approved, you're violating law, that you have to approve it. You don't have to do anything. Again, this is our community. We have a say in what happens in our community. Now, if this was, instead of Meta coming here, wanting to build a big data center, and it was somebody wanting to build, let's say, you know, an adult bookstore, where they showed movies, had whatever there, would you approve that? Yes, no? See a lot of blank faces there. What if it was, you know, would you approve a gun range there? I know there's Dakota County Gun Range further south on, on Umore Park area there, but would you approve another one? Let's see, what are some other things that, you know, society doesn't like right now? You know, a racetrack. You know, yeah, there's a test center there at Dakota County Technical College, but that's not used all the time. But say even a racetrack that was, had races every weekend during the summer, would you approve that? You know, they, they meet all the requirements by law, so you would have to approve that, wouldn't you? You probably wouldn't. There, there would be pushback on those things. And yet, you're all sitting here, all ready to approve this and say, okay, we're gonna go ahead with it because, you know, they meet all the requirements. Well, how does this fit into our, into our culture? How does this fit into our community? It doesn't. Nobody here wants it. We don't want it. We don't like the people, you know, the company that this is, that's doing this. We don't like what they're doing, because they're collecting data on all of us. This is all part of, of building a 15-minute city around it. We're not cattle, we're not to be herded in these tiny spaces where we don't own anything, and we're gonna be happy, because we won't be happy. That's how revolutions start. You, you have to really think about this, dig deep in your hearts, and forget what Meta wants, look at what the community wants. This is our community, we have a say in this, and one meeting like this is not acceptable. One hearing is not acceptable. This has to go on for longer. This cannot be passed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are gonna take just a quick five-minute recess. We've got some commissioners that need to take a quick recess for the bathroom, and we'll be back in five minutes. We will continue the public hearing at that time. We are now going to reconvene the planning commission meeting and reconvene the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come speak on this item, you may do so at this time.
My name is Lori Uffkin. I live at 3454 Crumpet Path. I've been a resident of this community for 30 years. I've been in real estate for almost 40. And obviously, I'm not against progression and so forth, but this whole project is just, gives me the weepy jibies, I'll tell you. The whole thing, it's atrocious. Can you tell me where there's one other place that has fences and this construction, this building in Dakota County or anywhere in Minnesota? Because I would like to see it. My state, my license is good for the state, and I've traveled in so many counties selling real estate. I've never seen anything like this before. I've never heard of anything like this. This is all new. And you are trying to just slam this down our throats. I mean, if somebody's making a lot of money out of this, obviously, it always comes down to money, doesn't it? And obviously, the city is going to get over $3 million because there's not 10% in parkland that's going to be designated back to the city, nor are the trees established or intended to be all planted. So, that's over $2 million. So, there's a lot of money that's going around. And there definitely should be an independent study of that land. I've lived in Dakota County since '79. There used to be signs out on that land that said radioactive material. It's hard to say where they went. They must have been removed before that 2018 study was done. There's so many factors that are involved with this, and so many people have concerns that are all legitimate. And this should really be taken seriously and not approved tonight or any time in the future. And why this has to be done in such a quick manner? It makes no sense. There must be some cover-up, some, something going on. I mean, does it fall into the aspect of all these train derailments? What's happened in Hawaii? I mean, there's too many things that are unknown. We don't want to be the test case for what happens to our kids and future generations because it's not acceptable. And all these people feel the same way, obviously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kathy Pritchard, and I live at 15703 Crystal Path. In the, an ex parte communications report was filed for both case dockets in the State of Minnesota case filings for this proposal. Docket numbers 22-572 and 22-579. I believe ex parte basically means for one party only and excludes the other party from the information. Correct me if I'm wrong. These ex parte communications were said to have occurred on December 7, 2022 between 2:00 and 2:30 p.m. The summary of the meeting said Excel Energy helped commission staff better understand aspects of the electric service agreement such as renewable energy procurement and initial versus subsequent premises. Staff also had questions related, related to the customer's land acquisition and any subsequent filings Excel could make prior to the commission taking up this matter. Other questions related to term length, rate-making treatment, and data center growth. And I expected to hear some of that tonight, and I did not hear anything. So, I was also surprised tonight with these variances because I thought I would hear reasons why the variants were needed. And I really didn't hear that. Like, why do they need 15-foot-high fences? I thought, oh, maybe they're going to put like a sound barrier up or something. So, the summary of the meeting, I don't understand why it had to be secret from the public. I think it would be a reasonable request that that information be released to the public and all the documentation you have in regards to those December 7 conversations. In that same, in that same document on the bottom of the form, it asks this question. For oral permissible ex parte communications, has a copy of this memo been sent to the assigned administrative law judge? The answers were, there was a box that said yes, a box that said no, and a box that said NA. The non-applicable box was selected here, and it was initial and dated December 9. I guess my point in about, isn't about it being sent to the judge. My point is, not applicable? The definitions means it's not relevant. And I can assure you, we, the people are relevant, and you work for us. We are the judge here, and that information seems quite relevant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Barner, 9836 Lurie Trail in Virgo Heights.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sorry?
Can you repeat your name and address, please?
Sure. Julie Barner, 9836 Lurie Trail in Virgo Heights. So, in this plan, the Umore Study, updated in 2018 by the city, Meta's the first project going up in the 15-minute city, so-called Umore Park. Alongside the 208-acre Meta Center, the city within a city will have a commercial zone, housing for 35,000 people, doubling the size of Rosemont, a school, its own transit system, and else. In the middle of the 15-minute city will be yet another regional center like this, maybe another Meta Center, if that is your understanding, bigger than the first. On December of 2022, your commission recommended specific variances that would allow for up to a 14-foot fence, 80-foot private communication towers, and other specific variances without having any knowledge of who this company was or what is for or who, who this was for. I remember watching the planning commission meeting where commissioner asked, who does this technology park serve? The city of Rosemont? U of M students? No answer was provided, but they received a recommendation anyways. Who does it serve? 15-minute cities have looked slightly different around the world, but their purpose is the same. A current Rosemont staff member was quoted in an article saying, "The city hopes to create 15-minute neighborhoods where people can walk between services and fulfill their daily needs in 15 minutes." He goes on to say that the old development pattern is very auto-centric, such as in Oxford, if you're following some of the global news. I just went there last year. I do a lot of traveling, where they are restricting movement to 15-minute zones. To decide if something is for you or the community, it's necessary to look at it in context. While 15-minute cities may ostensibly be about climate change, safety, and convenience, they are more about infrastructure for centralized control. The reality is 15-minute cities such as in Oxford, China, and that are forthcoming in Lebanon, Indiana, and other places are associated with 24/7 surveillance through artificial intelligence. You know Meta is big on that. Facial recognition. Do you know Meta is big on the metaverse too? You guys know all about that. Smart technologies, S for surveillance, M for monitoring, A for analysis, R for reporting, T for technology. All that could be controlled by a central controller. Implementation of exclusion zones and geo-fencing for restriction of movement and travel. Digital passports tied to social credit scores, which is determined by compliance.
Julia, I'll ask you to wrap up your comments.
And CBDCs to end cash and monitor spending, which again can be turned off and on. There's a pattern here. A wallet tied to your digital ID as well as medical information, financial information, and online activity. All about centralizing control. If Meta is under a lawsuit for tracking youth by over 30 states, do you feel concerned they are going to violate the privacy of Dakota County and Rosemont citizens? Your first job is to safeguard the futures of our children, and if you believe in any way that building this infrastructure may not safeguard the future of our children, then don't support it.
Hello. I'm Susan Ferroso from Farmington, Minnesota, 1646 240th Street West. I have a few questions. The first one, do you know what 50 decibels actually sounds like? That could be a good test for you to listen to that so you know what that sounds like. I want to remind you that you work for and represent the people here of Rosemont. And I want to encourage you that you do have a choice. Are you convinced that this proposal is a beneficial thing for our community? Or might it become the most damaging liability you have ever signed your name to? Listen to the people. Vote to represent them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening?
Do I need to state my address? No problem. Good evening. My name is Kayla Hauser. I'm a Rosemont resident. My address is 14569 DeHomi Avenue West. I would just like to take a moment to comment on, when I was at the Meta Open House and speaking to the Excel representative, obviously, he's not the one in charge and he's just representing, so I don't know if he had all his facts in place, but he told me the article that I read in the Star Tribune was inaccurate, but I would like to, for the record, state that on October 12, the Star Tribune reported that they would like to not only add to our community's development, but the PUC Thursday unanimously accepted power agreements between Excel Energy and Meta. The contract included discounted rate and contributions from Meta to fund Excel's diversity and equity inclusion program. I would like to know, because as a resident, right now, we're having this new program with Excel on our meters, with 5G being monitored, so they don't have to come to our house and save money and all that jazz. I would like to know, as a Rosemont citizen, are we going to get discounted rates because we pay our bills and stuff like that? Why is this big corporation allowed to have discounted rates when they're not a part of the city? They're not a part of the state. They're an outside entity coming in. So, I would like to know how they're keeping us safe from these foreign entities coming into our town. For example, if they're here, they're a citizen in the eyes of our state, so they have the right to then advertise in our schools. They have the right to donate millions upon millions of dollars to the city, which is great and all, but when do we say, no, thank you? I don't need your billions of dollars. We can get that from other mom-and-pop shops. When are we going to say the money, we don't need the money? We want to keep our town the way it is with progress that is beneficial for everyone, not just a few individuals? Because I see this project as a cash cow. How much money can we get out of this? How much can they donate to our city? But I would like to know, how is it helping our youth? How is it helping the next generation? Because I've been told, oh, if you don't like this program, you don't like a representative, just look somebody new. Well, once this gets in place, it's going to be really hard to shut it down and get rid of it. It's going to be in place for a long time as well as continuing to be able to grow. So, again, I would like to know, for the safety of our citizens and our next generation, when are we going to say is enough and enough? What is too much? What is too little? Because in our day and age right now, endless, you could build as much data facility as long as it's long. We're not, we're worried about how high it is, but when it's low like that, we're getting closer to the ground. Contamination, we're, again, out of the limited ones that they said, only a few were in, out of the regulation. Now, what about all those other areas they didn't test? Or the areas that are contaminated, they didn't test, and then it leaks into that and just starts spreading like wildfire? Like, what are replacements in place if this does happen or another natural disaster? I mean, we're in a tornado zone too, so if a tornado...
Kayla, I'd like to ask you to wrap up your comments.
If a, if a natural disaster hits, how are they going to be responsible if their equipment leaks, malfunctions, or like other people comment, a power outage? How are they not going to be restricted on their power usage as citizens are today? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Sir, you can go ahead and line up right behind him if you'd like. You can go ahead and stand right behind him for when he's done.
Hi. My name's Eric Martin. I live at 15702 Crystal Path in Rosemont. There are many reasons to delay approval of this project. There are so many questions that are still open. Many of them have already been brought up. I think the AURA, the environmental study, now that it's expired and was done five and 10 years ago, to look at a very broad, very disparate type of potential use. We now have a very specific understanding of what it's going to be used for. And that should not be just approved and passed on after going through a handful of consultants who review some documents. We now have very specific ideas about how the land, how the power is going to be used. There's still a lot of questions there. The mechanicals, it looks to me like there's 17 mechanical buildings or establishments in there. I assume those are either diesel-powered gen sets or natural gas gen sets or maybe natural gas turbines to provide emergency backup. Is that a, but we don't know what those mechanicals are. Typically, those types of gen sets, because they're critical standby, they don't have to meet the standard emissions requirements because those do slow down the startup times. They also have to be tested regularly. I think part of that AURA should take that into consideration. We have so many issues with diesel fumes already, and if that's going to be another issue, that needs to be taken into account. The amount of trucks has grown incredibly. We've got 100 dock doors that's going to be just a couple miles down from this potential place. The, the impact on the infrastructure is considerable. We just had our taxes raised just to have the road in front of our house resurfaced. And there's going to be a need for a lot more of that. Our taxes went up. We haven't heard anything about indexing or any type of tax advantages that are going to be given to Meta, a company currently being sued by attorneys general. All these things, and we have to consider the parties involved. The city of Rosemont is not a disinterested party in this transaction, and we can't say that, oh, we're just going to look at the glass and bricks. The University of Minnesota is a land-grant college. It was given this land either free from the government or at very low prices. It... It went away from its 2015 goal of sort of creating a more of a utopian, or excuse me, 2008 goal, as it says in your boards, of a more utopian vision to in 2018 going to a commercial vision. I don't think the city can just stand by and watch two supposed private parties engage in a transaction like this and not be involved. So I just think there are far too many questions still out there. Thank you, Mr. Whitman, for your comments earlier. I appreciated that, to hear those types of questions. But I think we really need to keep asking those, and we're not in a position to go forward with this right now. It should not be approved for all of the things that have been said tonight and many more that have not yet been considered. Thank you.
This is just more, my name is Todd Blackwood. I live at 14146 Aylesbury Avenue, Rosemont, Minnesota. This is more just a community plea to you guys as far as what type of community we are. So I came from Duluth. When I graduated from the University of Minnesota Duluth, I was living in St. Paul, and I met a girl that lived in Apple Valley. We then got engaged, and I didn't want to live in Apple Valley because I came from a smaller community. So we looked around, and Rosemont really appealed to me. Just the small-town feel. Apple Valley, Eagan, does not have still a small town. We have a grain elevator still, people. Okay? That's the type of atmosphere we have here. All right? I think this is being, it seems, I don't want to use the word shady because that would, that isn't the word, but it seems it's really being pushed down our throat like a lot of the other constituents, your constituents, have, you know, provided their opinions. And I would like, Mr. Whitman, if I could address something to you personally, Commissioner? When you were talking to Nate Brey from the, what's the name of his business?
CA Gear.
CA Gear, out there on Highway 3. You mentioned that you came from outside of this community, and that you have a family, a daughter, I think, believing softball, and a son in baseball, and you love the community. And I don't know exactly what, you know, when you came here, if you came here for work, but I think you kind of probably, I'm guessing, that you also like, you know, just the way this community is set up. There's a lot of people, when the market crashed in like '08, and then things started getting going again, that you would hear a lot of people would come to this community. I mean, houses were, you know, you couldn't keep a house. There was no inventory because of District 196. It's a great school district. You bring something like this in here? This isn't what we want. Like I said before, we still have a grain elevator in this town. You bring this in, I, I'm going to say this, I'm not in your mind, but if you were sitting there, sir, with the way you spoke about your family and how you came from out of state, I believe, you'd be with us. So I want you to think about that. How would this benefit your family and your children? I don't think it's going to be good for these families, their children, my son who's 16. So I like what we have now. Now, I understand that you're going to have growth. I get that, but I think this is too much. This is way overboard. This is not what we want, and I think it's being rammed on our throats. I don't know the chronological of this, but it seems like it's already been decided. We want to have a say. Okay? We want to keep Rosemont. I know it's going to grow. We might have to build another high school and things like that. Understand that. People want to come to this community. Okay? We're not Eagan. We're not Apple Valley. All right? At this point, we're not 70,000. If this, if this gargantuan thing that's going to be built, hopefully not, is going to bring us to that, then you've eroded everything that Rosemont's always been about, and we'll lose it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Raul Estrada. Live at 8302 143rd Street West in Apple Valley. Excuse me. I came here for two reasons. Number one, I am the Director of the American Indian Coalition in Minnesota, and one of the issues that keep coming back into play here is Umar Park land. And many of you may not realize or even understand that, that land has been in turmoil for quite some time with the Dakota tribes. And so whether or not it's legal to even use it is still up in the air. The other point is that I live in this community, you know? I live in Apple Valley. And like, I was just out in the hallway, and one of the things that I hear a lot from everybody is that this forum seems to be more of a courtesy, simply just to give everybody a platform to say something, whereas it seems that everything's already been decided. At least that's the vibe in the field that we get as community members, right? Yeah. And so it seems that like this thing has been going on for some time. We've heard things about the planning that go back to 2013, and I'm guessing it goes back beyond that, too. Whereas there's been a, as far as I'm concerned, a violation of public trust, because none of these things were made transparent in the beginning. When did this start? When was it initiated? Who brought this proposal forward? Was money changed, has money ever changed hands? And if so, with who? These are a lot of questions that I'm guessing a lot of the residents want to know. These are the taxpayers, these are the constituents, these are the voters. The other thing is, I've also heard about the economics. Now, I've been here a few times, and I've heard a lot of city council members talk about the great economic impact that it's going to have, how it's a positive thing to move forward and progressive, but at what cost? At what cost does that come? Now, we're talking about a small community. I've seen, I've watched areas like, when I was growing up, Richfield, Bloomington, New Hope, Crystal, all go from nice, small communities into crime-ridden, overpopulated cities. Is that what we're looking for? Is that what we want? Because that, bringing in Meta is only going to bring in a few handful of jobs. But we look at the development that's going on in the area, up and down County Road 42, and there's not thousands of developments happening, there's tens of thousands. They're bringing in tens of thousands of low-income subsidized housing developments. Now, is there a need for low-income housing? Sure. But that many, in a small area, in a community? Imagine the impact on that. What happens when you overpopulate a small community? Crime. Crime. And we know these are...
Raul, I'll ask you to wrap up, start wrapping up your comments.
Yeah, we know these are low-income subsidized housing, because I encourage everybody to look at Dakota County economic assistance and look at where their money is going. That's going into this area. And so imagine what's going to happen to your property taxes and your property values when they start to decline. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening?
Hi there, I'm Kim Zotnick, 801 Golden Meadow Road, Eagan. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but there's just a couple of things that I wanted to ask. One is, it seems that there's also one going in Farmington. So why are they putting these data centers all over the place? And the one in Farmington seems to be very rushed. So why are these all being so rushed? It's like they almost don't want to give the community a chance to refute it or something. I mean, I don't understand that. And, you know, the second thing I just noticed from the presentation was the EMF, the electromagnetic frequency. It said it would not interfere with pacemakers, which is a machine, but there was no mention of human or living things, you know? It was just pacemakers. So I think maybe we should do a study of that, because that's going to put off a whole lot of electromagnetic radiation for people who live in that area. And I don't know, how far would that go? I mean, you know? And I guess the third thing that I would have to say is, clearly, this is our community. I mean, we care about our community, and the community doesn't want it. I mean, it's like, yeah. So I mean, we should have some say in what happens in our own community. And it just seems like this is, again, like as everybody else has been saying, it's being ram-rotted down our throat, whether we want it or not, and no one's listening. So, I mean, we're all here for a reason. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add all or no? Just one minute.
Did you speak already?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
Do without the microphone.
I just wanted to say that by World War II ended, those, all the materials that they were using for that ammunition, they dumped into the soil, and it has been seeping into the soils for 70-some years, all that ammunition.
And I'll have you go ahead. Okay.
Thank you. I don't have any prepared words. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight.
I personally just state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jennifer Timmerman, 13848 Belmont Trail in Rosemont. I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the time that you have afforded us tonight. And I also attended the Open House, and I really appreciate the forthcoming nature of all the people who provided the materials that were there and talked openly with the public during that time. And I really appreciate, you know, just all the thought and willingness to hear everybody's thoughts on this building. Actually, I do agree that this would be a great addition to Rosemont. I appreciate that on the road between Rosemont and Highway 52, it would be nice to have a break from all of the continuous housing that's going that way. And with this building being set back so far with all the landscaping around it, I think it would be just a nice area to have as an extension of the DCTC area and Umar Park over there. So I just wanted to, I know we're all tired, we all want to go home, I didn't eat dinner, but thank you for your time and being willing to listen to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening?
My name is Maria Petrenko, 2219 24th Avenue South, Minneapolis. I just wanted to remind you that you serve the people. And if the decision has been already made before consulting the people that you're supposed to represent, you can expect to receive a presentment from the grand jury for violating the trust of the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item this evening?
Good evening, I'm Jane Jensen, 16135 Gauntlet Court West in Rosemont. And again, especially those who are volunteering and serving, thank you. And secondly, thank you, City Council, for hearing all of this and running to the end. Where does the city of Rosemont fall regarding the need of funding? Is that a deciding factor of the timeline of the rollout of the development of this site? I did hear that it was a private-to-private land transaction. What right does the city of Rosemont have to say in this? I think maybe that would help the citizenship understand better what's going on and perhaps give them some light of what else that they consider to do. If we weren't all recorded and online, and we had liberty to say exactly in an open-floor conversation, what could you tell me about the additional steps that we could take to have further discussion? Perhaps buy some time, consider some legal options in regard to having this land-to-land transaction occur? I don't know, how much money does the University of Minnesota receive as a bonus or a series of bonuses if certain deadlines are met in the rollout of this site? I don't, I don't have insight on what the city of Rosemont's, are your hands tied right now? That's, anyway. And furthermore, I would just ask for a moment that we could ask for wisdom and peace, knowledge, and better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kettiger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Anthony, I'll start. It's going to take me a second here to kind of group some of these things. I, I may ask you to repeat some things that were covered in the presentation since they came up again, but we will not probably cover, if, if some of the concerns were addressed during the presentation and through the staff report, we will not cover all of them again.
I can tell you, there are some that I will have no answer to.
And that's, and that's fine if we should defer to the applicant, that is fine as well. There was some comments around the water impacts, so I just want to, if you could, and the water impact and the building of the water tower, if you could just reiterate again how we've planned for that water, and this is within our plans, are we going to see, there was a concern about rationing of water for residents?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I would definitely defer to our Public Works Director, Nick Egger. He is well-versed in the city's water and sewer needs.
Sure. Thanks, Anthony, and I see your water bottle is empty, so maybe it's time for a refill, as much talking as you've been doing tonight. Thanks, Commissioners. Yes, the city does what's called a comprehensive plan every 10 years, and one of the chapters within that plan is our water system layout, and that's planned in accordance with the types of land uses that are forecasted all across the city, heading out as a 20-year lookout. So a lot of computation is done based on types of land use intensities and the typical water use rates of those sorts of land uses. In this area of the town, it was, it was forecasted to be this nature of development, I guess, in terms of intensity and scale and so forth. And so the types of pipe sizes that we have, storage facilities, like water towers, were all laid out on a map, and that map is actually out in the hallway tonight, and it was presented at the Open House a couple of weeks ago. Nothing about that outlay needs to change. And so what I mean by that is, we take into account the information submitted by the applicant with this, and take a look at that in context with that comprehensive plan, and everything is in alignment or actually beneath expectations for the types of uses that would come into play. So with reference to the water tower, a site was intended to be at the intersection of Blaine and County Road 42 all along. So this development would simply play out the plotting necessary to dedicate the land for the city to have that. So that is the purpose for that small corner at that southwest part of the intersection being identified on their site plan for that structure.
So that would have occurred regardless of, whenever we plotted this land, regardless of the user or the development of it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And when you, just to clarify, when you say the water was planned for a user of this type, it wasn't necessarily a data center, but it was a business, with the business park type zoning?
Yes.
For the water usage that would associate with a business park user?
Yes.
Or business park users on this land?
Correct.
Thank you.
Would you be drilling a well over there?
Would you like me to answer that question?
Yes, you can answer that question.
Answer is no.
Um, Anthony, there were some concerns, some questions or comments around variant, the variances that were given to this site.
Correct.
Around architecture. Um, can you just, and we don't give those variances to all, to all developments. Um, they're asked for and conditions are considered. Can you speak a little bit to that?
So, the planned unit development process is, um, is used by the city frequently to allow for, um, different types of development, and oftentimes, it's a negotiation between the city and the applicant about, um, what trade-offs there are if, if there's a certain request by an applicant. Um, in this case, it was, well, if you want this, then you have to provide farther setbacks. You can't just build it right up to the road like that. Um, with regards to other areas having to play by the rules, um, staff works with, uh, other property owners, uh, with projects on helping them meet the requirements of the city code, uh, in the way that is most appropriate for that site. So, um, since it was brought up specifically with Flint Hills Resources, um, yeah, the areas that you can see from Highway 52 in alignment with the city's, uh, city code's, um, requirement for a certain amount of brick or whatever, um, we work with them and say, well, okay, fifty percent brick, but you don't have to put it around the, the whole building because what, who cares about the brick facing the refinery? And so, working with them on those places. So, it isn't, it isn't, um, you know, a blank check to just do whatever you want. It's, it's, uh, a back and forth. And so, when the planned unit development was approved in, uh, March of this year, uh, the conversations were, if you want this, then you have to, you know, mitigate that, and in this case, through deeper setbacks.
So, it really is those setbacks from the road and the visibility to the road with the land?
Correct.
That has afforded them the option to do that?
Right. In other, in other examples, um, uh, in like residential developments, developers will ask for, um, smaller side yard setbacks, and the, the, um, the get that the city gets is, you know, uh, different materials, limited lap siding, more brick and stone and things like that. Um, but that's just a, uh, one example of that.
Thank you. Um, there were also some comments around the soil and the soil testing and the contamination study, um, and I think I've heard through some of the comments, the validity, like the concern about the validity of that. Can you just clarify what governing bodies oversee that and, and the, like, how we know to trust the validity of that testing?
Sure. Um, well, I can just say that the remedial investigation that took place in 2017 that identified areas of contamination that the U is avoiding marketing for sale until those areas are cleaned up was done under the, um, supervision of the MPCA. So, I would say the State Pollution Control Agency would be the overarching kind of, um,
Madam Chair.
Or agency for that.
Madam Chair, why doesn't the university representative answer questions like that? We had eighteen speakers.
Madam Chair.
If I could ask you to have the audience refrain from interrupting.
Yeah, so we do, we start with staff, and staff answers our, so I will, I will ask anyone in the audience to refrain from speaking during this time, but we do, um, I will share how we go through this. We do ask staff to answer, and then if it is something that staff feels should be deferred to the applicant, staff will defer it to the applicant, um, as well. So, we, it is very likely that we will have the universities, um, or Excel Energy or others answer questions as well, um, potentially throughout this process, but we do start with staff based on the conversations and the information that they have researched because they work with multiple bodies on this application and the research.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. To answer your specific question, the remedial investigation in 2017 was supervised by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency.
Okay, and we heard a lot about concerns about contamination, incinerators, um, arsenic, lead pellets, things like that. That, that is very well potentially still, I don't know if it's still there or if it's been corrected, but this, there is a lot of land out there, and we are looking at a very, a portion of that land in which the study, um, what came back clean.
Correct. The city is aware of, um, significant sites of contamination within Umore Park. That is, that is correct.
Thank you. Um, there were some concerns and some questions around the EMF impact. Is that something you can address at all, or?
Um, I, I can't really speak to it more than I did in my presentation. I think, um, Excel Energy probably is more well-versed with EMF, um, impacts just due to their transmission facilities.
Okay, thank you. Jake, I will probably ask you to speak on that, please.
Appreciate all the comments and concerns that we've received related to EMF electromagnetic fields as it relates to electric transmission infrastructure that's proposed for this project. Um, and I have a few things to point out, you know.
Jake, if I can just ask you to speak real clearly into the microphone because I, there's some people that.
Sure. Sorry about that. Um, I would suggest, uh, members of the audience to review our environmental assessment that was attached to our transmission facilities, uh, permit approval that we received from the city of Rosemount earlier this year. Um, we had a third-party consultant conduct that, uh, environmental assessment on our behalf, um, and they lay out some of the impacts. Obviously, EMFs is, is one of those key topic areas that they discussed, and so if you're interested in learning a little bit more about what EMFs are, how they're calculated, how they're measured, that would be a really good place to turn to. It is listed on the city of Rosemount site for everyone to access. Um, in terms of, you know, their question around, um, potential impacts or adverse effects to human health, um, the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission, and I'll refer to them as the PUC, is really our, our governing body, um, and they're appointed by the governor, and their, their sole purpose is to effectively protect the, the ratepayers from a financial rate perspective, but also, um, from a physical safety perspective as well. That's, that's under their purview, um, and so this would obviously fall under the latter. Um, they've repeatedly found that there's insufficient evidence to suggest that there's any adverse, um, side effects as a result of EMF exposure to, um, humans. Um, additionally, or as a result of that, therefore, there's no Minnesota state regulations pertaining to EMF protection or anything, uh, similar. Um, additionally, there's no federal regulations, uh, that also limits or requires certain levels of protection as it relates to EMFs, um, as well. Um, and so, due to that, there's no additional protection on our infrastructure because we adhere to those standards at the federal level. Um, I'll also point out, as attached within that environmental assessment, we had, um, there's some charts that detail out just how quickly these EMFs dissipate within a relatively short distance from the center line of the infrastructure itself. Um, and so, as you begin moving away, a majority of what's produced at the center line will be fully dissipated, or a majority of it will be dissipated within the transmission line's easement. Um, I mean, that's, that's really how quickly, uh, EMFs dissipate from their source. Um, additionally, I'll, I'll just point out, you know, and we're constantly surrounded by phones and computers and radios and all sorts of things that emit EMFs. You know, if, if folks within their homes are not having any issues or any adverse side effects because of them, um, this proposed, uh, infrastructure is not going to have any negative impacts to those, even those that are, um, in close proximity to the proposed infrastructure.
Thank you. Anthony, um, this one I'm going to ask you to go through, you or, or Adam. There were some questions, some concerns, some comments tonight about this being a form of courtesy and, um, already being decided, having that vibe and feel, and so I wonder if you could just step through kind of what the planning process is from the time the city receives an application and, and if this is different than what we do with similar other projects that come in, whether it be the Home Depot or the FedEx facility or the, um, CA gear that we saw tonight, other applications?
So, the process, um, was very similar to the Home Depot project that came through, um, last year or the year before. Um, staff had worked with representatives for the end-user or the developer of the site, um, to identify, uh, the requirements of the city code for development of the site, um, the processes involved, planned unit development process, if, if that's, um, appropriate, and, um, whether or not the zoning for the site works. And, um, with regards to the, the Home Depot project, their questions were, they, they received, um, uh, deviations from the code related to outdoor storage over there, um, their fencing and things like that. And so, it's very similar to that project, and there's a lot of times, uh, that city staff is having conversations with consultants, um, ahead of an application submittal, so that, uh, we don't just get a packet dropped off on our desk that doesn't really meet any of the code requirements, and just, you know, we, we want to make it as, uh, efficient as possible for everyone involved, ourselves especially included. Um, so, from a planning standpoint, it's, it was very in line with other major projects that have come through in recent years.
And, Ma- Madam Chair, as a part of just the overall public education about how development occurs within Rosemount or generally any city within this, this region, um, the city has published a couple of articles fairly recently in the city newsletter. Um, copies were also made available at the open house. Um, there is a lot of complexity and nuance that goes into bringing a development from concept to completion, and the way that we are continuing to attempt to help inform and educate people on how the development process takes place is to, to provide those narratives to the public. Anthony mentioned the Home Depot. That was one of the case studies that we used in one of the more recent articles to understand that these things start back at a certain time, typically under a confidential type of a project name because if, especially if they're a publicly traded company or something else, that'd be sensitive to information getting out ahead of any type of formal approvals that could be detrimental to their, to their business plan or potentially their employees or other things. So, there is information out there about how that development process takes place that the city has actively attempted to promote.
And just in terms of the application for this project, the formal application for this project was, we have a certain amount of what's made to the city, we have so much time then to review it as planning commission and hold the public hearing, of which that was done within that timeframe. Um, correct?
The, the state statute requires a decision on any application submitted to the city be made within sixty days. Um, the city can, um, if, if there's, if they submit an application mid-month and it'll kind of run out that sixty days, we can extend that at our, on our behalf. But, um, typically, you know, it's to ensure a, a speedy review for all applicants, including residents and, and, you know, anyone looking to, um, develop or, or, and need any sort of answer from the city.
So, this application is, has been handled in terms of time, we're not rushing it through as my.
This is consistent with every other project.
Consistent with our other projects. Our notice has been given, public hearing, all of that.
In fact, um, you know, the open house was, was, um, something that we don't typically do, although we do encourage applicants to, um, have a neighborhood meeting. Um, it's not usually promoted as widely and usually only, um, people who would receive public hearing notices anyways.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just double down on that, I think that's a really critical component of this process, that city staff understands the complexity of this project and how long it's been going on and the questions that started to emerge about code names and misunderstanding maybe of the development process. And so, to do a public open house like Anthony just described, calling in the entire project team, four out of five city council members were there, probably ten city staff, two-hour open house, that doesn't ever happen, really. We, a developer hosts those often, city staff doesn't even often feel the need to attend. It's their project, they discuss it. For this one, we've been so directly connected to it for so long to help educate the public, we've been talking about it openly and the weekly video recaps that I often do of city council meetings, this public open house that we did. So, I, I think it's really critical for folks that might feel as though that some of the things that have been said tonight about the planning process and how the planning process does end up boxing in, um, the procedural steps that these applications need to take. Steps have been taken over and above the normal process to try to educate. This is a once-in-a, in-a-lifetime kind of project for, from a, from a standpoint of not being a thing that happens very often, and so we wanted to try to educate about that to, to let folks be, be made aware of it, um, and, and form their own opinion, and then that's totally fine. But I just wanted to double down on, on that statement.
Thank you. Um, can you share a little bit on the next steps in this process after tonight for the public's knowledge?
So, this will be going to the city council at its next meeting. Um, following that, uh, they would, I mean, that's kind of the, the action decision. Um.
And then from, from there.
Building permits.
Building permit, well, the land sale maybe, the finalization of the land sale.
Yeah, the closing, that's outside of the city's hands.
Right.
Madam Chair, the other piece too, just from an overall general development education perspective, it's very common for applicants to be before the city to receive their public approvals prior to closing on a piece of property, much like a homeowner would make sure that they know what they're, what they're getting, that everything is in place on a home they'd be buying before they actually acquire and close on the, the purchase of a home. So, there's a lot of similarities just in concept of those types of transaction, getting approvals on the front side before you actually own something.
I think we've seen that with other developments as well.
Mm-hmm.
I think, um, oh.
Want me to go?
Yeah.
There was, I was taking some notes too, so. Uh, there was a question that came up about backup power and how that would be handled. Is there like a gas power generator? Do you have any understanding of that?
Um, yeah, I think the applicant's consultant would be the better to speak to what, what their backup power plans are.
Good evening. Again, Tracy with Kimberly Horn. Um, with the, the backup generators, there, there are some backup generators. I believe that comment was in relation to the environmental impacts, um, and what the mechanical equipment is. Um, so I'll go kind of two different directions with this. Um, the, if any air permitting is necessary, that is done through the state level. Um, in this case, there are not a significant amount of generators. I think the equipment that was being referred to was probably some of the other mechanical equipment and cooling equipment. Um, a lot of that is used for the, the cooling, um, within the buildings, and that is actually a dry cooling system. So, hence why the water use is much lower than people are thinking it would be for this type of use. Um, so I kind of went two different directions there, but I believe that's what the question was about all of the kind of blocks in the equipment yard behind the buildings.
Thank you. There was also, um, my question, comment that I just lost. Oh, the, uh, the difference of business park versus this being an industrial project. Can you clarify a little bit about what our business park, how this fits with, why this fits within business park?
Sure. So, um, you know, the business park land use designation includes a lot of different uses from manufacturing, offices, warehousing, distribution. Um, so from, from a use standpoint, um, some large low buildings with most of the stuff happening inside fits with that business park designation. There aren't smoke stacks, there aren't, um, you know, refining equipment and things like that. That would be more likely to be seen in a general industrial or heavy industrial district. So, the, the, and even within the land use designation of business park, it does allow for some limited light industrial zoning, and that's typically been used for, um, outdoor storage. Like the Home Depot project, uh, was rezoned as, um, light industrial to allow for that, um, outdoor stor- storage on there. So, from a use standpoint, it really is in line with a business park use as defined by the city code.
Thank you. Um, Joe, there was a question on what right does the city of Rosemount have to say in this? So, if I can just have you kind of reiterate, um, and share again what you said earlier in terms of, like, we're outside of the land sale, that's between two private parties, but what rights do we have?
Yeah, Madam Chair, absolutely. The, at this point in the process, it's, it's the, the planning commission's role to just compare this proposal to the standards that have been established by the city council for this project, you know, for this type of project, and it's just related to the, the land use approvals, not, as you say, the, the transfer between the two other parties. Um, you know, that's the process that's been set up in the city code, and therefore, that's the process that, you know, we're now following and, and moving ourselves through.
So, the setbacks, the, the land being appropriate use for this, the landscaping, those type of environmental concern, I mean, all of those, many of the things we went through tonight, making sure that it meets the criteria within our code.
Yep, absolutely. Those, those decisions were, you know, are considered legislative in nature, were previously.
Commissioner Reed, did you have anything else on your list that I did not catch?
No, I think you've covered it all. Other than, yeah, that's it. I already have been made and covered. I think we're...
Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes.
One thing I heard, I think it was the first speaker requested that our responses be put in writing. I'm not sure if that's feasible, like to respond to every single question. But my question is, does the, when this goes forward to city council, city council makes a final decision, is that supported by written findings? Is a written finding included in that decision?
Typically findings are only used for denial. There's a resolution with several whereas clauses in it, but there aren't typically findings made. That doesn't mean they couldn't be included in a resolution, but that's not typically something that we do unless it's a denial. And I don't know, Joe, if you have any...
No, I don't have anything to add that, you know, if you're going to classify it as a finding, that's not the legal term I'm using in this instance. It's that, the finding is that the, I don't mean to sound like a broken record saying the same thing, but it's that the proposal meets the framework that's been established. That's the finding, quote unquote. And denial findings are saying why the proposal doesn't meet those in a situation for a denial.
Thank you. Anthony, this one isn't quite so much about this project necessarily, but it was a comment that was made and I just wanted to clarify it. There was a comment about tens of thousands of low-income housing being developed. I'm not aware of tens of thousands of low-income housing, so it might have been a little bit out of context, but I don't want residents to think that all the housing along 42 that's being developed is low-income housing.
Certainly. I can speak to that, Madam Chair, thank you. For example, the Roars project on the northwest quadrant of Akron Avenue and 42 is a 100% market rate multifamily product. Schaefer Richardson did receive approval to construct two buildings. One would be a mix of market rate and workforce housing or income restricted housing. And the other building was 100% market rate.
And that project is on the east side of Akron, correct?
Correct, north of the future lifetime. There is one apartment being constructed in the Amber Fields development, which, was it 132 units? 160 units that is workforce housing or affordable, I guess. It's income limited and I think it's limited to folks making less than $60,000 a year. So, and they still have to pay rent. And I think, I just want to note is that, you know, affordable housing, a lot of folks, they think of Section 8, that it's folks that get some free housing. And what we see here in the city, and we do work with Dakota County CDA on meeting the city's affordable housing goals, is that it's workforce housing. They have to pay rent. They have to have an income to pay the rent. They just can't make more than a certain amount because the rent is kept to a certain level. So there are affordable housing developments that have been approved and been built since I've been here, but certainly the majority of them are market rate. And ideally, you know, we would build more of it so that in 40 years, that will be the affordable housing without having to do subsidies or tax credits and things like that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yes.
Oh, I'll add just a quick one and then toss the ton over to you. There is another comment about renewable energy. I think it was the gentleman who said he worked at Flint Hills and stated that Flint Hills has a renewable energy source and why doesn't this facility have renewable energy? They're just sucking energy from XL. Do we have authority to impose a condition that they must use renewable energy or they must construct renewable energy? Do we even have that authority?
Not currently, Commissioner Whitman. The city code doesn't have any sort of requirement for that. I would say Flint Hills has a lot of land, which is why they built their solar farm over there. And even then, it produces about 50% of their needs, just for some context on that one. But certainly the city and the city code as it is currently written does not have any requirement for a certain level of renewable energy source for development.
Is, Madam Chair, Trish, I don't know if you wanted to chat about the company's kind of green initiatives at all and their vision to maybe be a bit carbon neutral?
Thank you. Yeah, so the company does have very strong sustainability goals that they hold themselves to. So the project actually will be offset by renewable energy, meaning that they will help accomplish more development of it in other areas. It won't be onsite, it won't be in Rosemont, but they do want to contribute to the generation of renewable sources. They also, and just a renewable, not from an energy standpoint, but, you know, from a water conservation standpoint, from contributing to city water projects, there's a number of pillars that they go by so that they operate sustainably as it can for the use and really do go above and beyond what they have to. To your point, there's not a requirement to do really any of that, but they do it as a company to be a good steward.
Got it, thanks. And I was thinking too, I mean, isn't it true also that XL Energy itself has renewable energy policies? So it's not just like that energy coming from XL is non-renewable energy sources, right?
Exactly. XL does. I mean, a lot of that's mandated by the state. So there are layers upon layers of energy goals to become renewable, you know, in the next couple decades.
Thanks.
So Trish, just one more question. Are they pursuing any certifications like LEED for the project?
They will not pursue the actual certification themselves. The buildings inherently and a lot of the building techniques they use would meet a lot of those standards. And I see that a lot in development now where a lot of companies will go and they will build their buildings to those standards, again, for their own initiatives. But getting that certificate or getting that piece of paper doesn't do anything but be that piece of paper. So I think, you know, as this all goes forward, we get to, you know, building plans and more of the detail too, it'll be more apparent with all of the development through design of what all the energy-saving measures are for the building design.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I think it was, has been mentioned time and time again tonight that we already have our minds made up when we come in here. And that, I just want to set the record straight that we don't, or I don't particularly. It's a clean slate when we come in here, we listen to the presentations, we listen to the evidence or the facts of some of the items that are brought forward. And it's our job, you're right, is to listen to your folks' concerns as well. If we didn't do that, we wouldn't be doing our jobs. And over the years, this is my fifth year being on the Planning Commission, there's times where it did check all the boxes, like our attorney, you know, mentions that it has to meet criterias. And if that's the case, that's what we go along with. But there's also times where it met the boxes, but it wasn't a good fit for the city. And there are times where the Planning Commission, I know over the years, where we didn't agree with something and we either put a pause on it to get more of the concerns answered or we basically said it's just not a good fit. So with that in mind, I just want you to know, like, nothing's been decided tonight. And my question was probably now is, what if the Planning Commission tonight said, let's pause, let's take a look at some of the concerns, what would be the protocol for that? What would happen then?
For, like a motion to continue?
Something to continue, to look more into, or...
What more would you direct staff to look into?
I'm just asking the protocol.
Sure. Well, it's certainly the commission's prerogative to make, take any action it sees fit. And if it sees that there is more information to be gained by continuing it to another meeting, certainly, you know, a motion like that could be made, just as it has in the past.
Okay.
Certainly. That's usually been in cases where a time for a traffic study to be generated or something like that would have been the need for a pause, so to speak.
Because what I'm hearing tonight too is, you know, well, what's our role as a Planning Commission? If you're just basically somebody that's just going to agree with what is written here as a motion of what the planning folks in the city council have said to do or goes to the council, what is our role? Well, there is, there would be no role. We wouldn't, there would be no need for us. So our role is, like I mentioned, to listen to the facts, to listen to the information, to gather thoughts and concerns as well. So that's what I'm thinking my job is. I know you applaud, I'm not looking for applause. I'm just trying to understand so that, because I'm telling you tonight, it's been very difficult to, we hear facts, we want progress, we have sustainable energy, the U of M is a good partner, we have people here that have concerns. So it's been up and down, let me tell you, to basically say, yep, it meets all the boxes, so therefore I must say yes. It's been very difficult tonight. So I don't want you guys to think that we take our jobs lightly.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rivera, I would also probably remind the group or point back to one of Anthony's earlier slides, would talk about the certain types of review authority that the Planning Commission has based on the type of application that any applicant has submitted. I'm sure our city attorney can maybe expand on that a bit more, but the term that was used is a quasi-judicial in terms of the applications that are in front of the Planning Commission tonight.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to jump in as well. And again, you know, the types of information that, you know, assume could be gathered if they're, you know, you're considered somebody for extension would still have to be related to the authority that you have to make this decision as a land use decision. And those criteria as are laid out in the staff report and staff have recommended, they have reviewed the proposal and said, you know, based on our review, we believe that these boxes have been checked, those criteria, you know, have been met, they recommend these conditions. So to continue something, you know, this process, and I use the term continue as in not make the decision this evening to continue to a further meeting, you know, my recommendation would be that there would have to be, you know, you should have some articulable item that you're questioning of these things that are within your purview to approve. And if that proposal has met those, you know, you could extend and try and collect more information on those things. But if, you know, staff have said, you know, those things that you are able to make a decision on, the information has been provided. I know a lot of, you know, there's other things that have been brought up that aren't necessarily within the Planning Commission's purview. And, you know, extending the process to have the Planning Commission, you know, essentially direct staff to look into something that the Planning Commission then would have authority to act on, might not be a recommended course of action, but that's just kind of expanding on what Adam and staff outlined.
I understand, thank you.
And just to clarify for everyone there, while this is a quasi-judicial decision this evening, there are many things that come across our agendas and decisions we make that are not quasi-judicial that we do have different latitude on. So we're not, it's not, everything is a, is a doesn't check the box decision.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I appreciate all the comments and questions too. And I joined this commission coming up on six years ago for this very reason, right? Because I wanted to voice in what we were doing in our community. I live, you know, less, about a mile, maybe a mile and a half from this development. I've got a family and two daughters. And one of the reasons I joined is because there was a lot of growth happening. And where I grew up, it was very similar. There was a lot of agricultural area that was getting developed and as a young kid, I didn't understand it. So I wanted to be part of that process, be part of the community and see development the right ways. So knowing kind of, you know, that's why I joined, I had a lot of the same questions, you know, particularly around the environmental aspects, which has come up again and again when we've done Amber Fields and other areas, this has come up a number of times. We've had our partner from U-More here several times. So, and I don't think it's been rushed to upset at first, is that, you know, there was an initial review last year, which was open. There was the open house, there's this meeting that's open. So I think, you know, the process has been relatively open and communicated. I think all of the concerns I have had have been answered. I mean, I had electrical concerns, that's been answered, our partner here from XL's here, the water concerns, the water usage, you know, having that understanding is comparing it to other businesses, like two small restaurants, it's less than that. The noise, we've answered that. EMF, that's been answered. There's been a lot of...
Now what happened? Not enough evidence. And there is evidence. You were elected us when you're...
You would ask the audience to refrain from commenting during this time. We don't have an open public hearing at this time.
So, I mean, for all those reasons, all the concerns I've got are, have been addressed. I think this is going to be a great addition to the community for a number of reasons. And so I'm, you know, in my viewpoint in terms of what I've heard and meeting all of the quasi-judicial decision points, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Any other commissioners want to comment at this time? Yes, Commissioner Whitman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, Commissioner Rivera, I really appreciate your comments. I feel the same way. I mean, there's, I certainly have not made a decision, okay? I didn't come here making a decision. I've watched the city council meetings, I've heard your concerns, I've heard your voices Yeah, I mean, I've never talked to someone at the Met Council. I don't even know, I don't even know who to call, you know, to talk to someone over there. So I don't work for them. I'm an independent thinker and that's, you know, that's who I am. But there's a problem when the public, at least, at the very least, has a perception that there's, that things have been rushed, that there's decisions being made in the back room. That's a problem. And we've heard, we've heard many, many people concerned about that. And you can't help but sort of share in that feeling, you know? I'm not saying that that's, I don't believe that's happening. I certainly am not a part of that back room conversation, if it is happening. But it is a problem that the public has that perception. I've watched the city council meetings, I know that they're doing things to be more transparent, they're putting things out there, they're educating the public on their zoning processes, which is a, it is a complex process for entitlements and that sort of thing. So, you know, that's super helpful. We need to do better. And it's evident from the concerns we've heard. So certainly I think we all, as the Planning Commission, as city council, as staff here working in the interests of the residents, need to all figure out individually how to do better and as a city for any, any project and application that comes in. So I hear that and I really respect all of you for coming up. It's not an easy thing, talking public, but also in front of everyone and, you know, it's kind of hard issues. Laying my cards on the table here, the envi, I've told you from the beginning, the environmental issue is the thing that raised my antenna, antennas, I got two of them. And I know, so we got this AUAR that we're relying on and that exempts us from doing an environmental assessment worksheet and an environmental impact statement. But that document expires five years, every five years, and you have to update it every five years. The last time it was updated, the effective date of it is August 2018 and it was approved, I think, like October... every five years. The last time it was updated, the effective date of it is August 2018, and it was approved, I think like October, mid-October 2018. So we're beyond five years from the last time it's approved. And I have the AUAR, the latest update, and it states in here that once the City Council adopts the AUAR update, the AUAR will remain valid for an additional five years from the adoption date. Five years from the adoption date. And so I have a concern that are we, is this environmental document still able to be relied on? And I know, I know that we have our subject matter environmental consultants who have stated that everything's okay, but knowing what I know of how, how environmental review works, and seeing how this states five years from the adoption date, and looking at our preliminary plat requirements that state, prior to a final plat submission, the following information shall have been reviewed and approved by the council, an environmental assessment worksheet, when required and subject to the provisions of Minnesota State statutes, which the AUAR would fill that place. Is this AUAR document a valid document on which this project can rely? And that's, that is the issue for me, that I'm concerned about moving forward without further analysis, or bringing that subject matter expert in to give us some better information in the record to support an approval. I don't know if that means continuing it for our review?
Commissioner Whitman, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
When you asked, I would have to have something, the term, you know, legitimately to bring up, to have it postponed, or to have it continue. And that was on my list, is the environmental expiring at the end of the year. And so what I'm hearing and echoing with that, too, that was probably the item that I would bring up the most, is I don't want it to expire at the end of the year. Then we're locked into something, then the concerns are, so why can't we take a pause and have that reviewed, have it extended for the next five years? That makes everybody feel a little bit more comfortable with that. And I think that would, I don't even want to say appease. I think that would establish a little bit more of a trust factor, like you mentioned, but it also would take care of that environmental thing that seems to be front and center. That's going to be expiring in a month or two.
Or not, or it has.
Or it has, I don't know.
So I hate to be, you know, throwing a, giving a fly in the hole.
I mean, attorneys here and the city, can we get a definitive answer?
Are you a subject matter expert in this environmental review?
I'm going to have to refer, defer to city staff on this specific AUAR process question, and as I think it's been, well, somewhat addressed.
Certainly, the AUAR update is currently in process. As I said, the update really incorporates development that's occurred since the last update into the AUAR. The development that has occurred since the last update is consistent with the scenarios for development from the original 2013 AUAR. So it's staff's opinion that the AUAR is still valid from a content standpoint. And certainly, if you want to get hung up on a, on a deadline, that's fine, but that, nothing has changed on the site since mid-October till today? So is it no longer valid then?
So Anthony...
According to, well, Anthony, I'm not getting hung up on a deadline, okay? We have a fiduciary duty as Planning Commissioners to uphold the state constitution, the statutes, and the rules. The rules state that the AUAR remains valid for an additional five years from the adoption date. That's incorporated into the AUAR. I'm not getting hung up on a deadline here, I'm trying to uphold my fiduciary duties as a Commissioner.
Anthony, just to clarify with the AUAR and the, and the development, when the AUAR, so we've had some development on the site, not, not a lot that's completed, but we've approved some projects on the site, correct?
Correct, Madam Chair.
For the most part, Amber Fields, right? So, but that, when it was done in 2018, did it take that housing development? I can't remember who it was that was doing that housing development at that time.
No, that occurred since the last update.
All of that. So it had none of that housing, like, the AUAR didn't, well, it's occurred, they didn't use that as a, as a scenario, is what I'm saying. Like, we anticipated that being housing, I feel like, longer than that. So in the current AUAR, did they, did they take any of that into consideration or not?
Well, there was, the AUAR had always anticipated residential development in that portion of the U-More Park site. Just like the AUAR has always taken, anticipated business park development in this northeast portion of the U-More Park site.
So while, while that has now, while that has always been anticipated, the AUAR has anticipated those, that development, and so therefore it's done the study based on that development?
Right.
And so to me, it would be different, the AUAR issue would be different if they anticipated it to be all business park, and now we've put 2,500 homes there. Or we anticipated it to be all residential, and now we built some heavy industrial user there, that would significantly change the land use of what the, the previous AUAR was done under.
Right, right.
But to me, we've, we've continued to develop consistently with what the AUAR was planning, so I am, I am of the strong belief that when the new AUAR gets done, it's going to follow very similar, because last time it was, this land is going to be developed residential. Well, guess what? This land is now being developed as residential. And this land is going to be developed as business park, and it may or may not include that as being developed as business park, depending on where we're at with this process, but it will continue to say the plan is for that to be business park.
Madam Chair, and Adam, Anthony, I'm curious whether or not we would put a condition on that says that the AUAR process is met. I don't know what words we'd use, but whether that would be a way we could approach this to say, there's a condition that the AUAR legal process is met prior to building or something?
Certainly, Commissioner Reed, a condition that the, subject to the adoption of an update to the U-More Park AUAR is certainly a condition that could be added to the Commission's recommendation.
And that would go on the plat motion? Or the site plan?
I don't know that it necessarily matters, but the plat would probably be ideal, since it's kind of the first step.
I would recommend putting it in the plat approval.
What was that?
I would recommend it being one of the conditions for the first plat.
For the plat, okay, that's what I believe as well.
And, and just to clarify, are you recommending, are you contemplating that the AUAR would be finalized and approved by the City Council prior to final review and approval of this project by the City Council? Because, because here, here's my concern, pre-commitments to a project when we don't have a final valid environmental review document. So we, you know, if we move forward and the City Council approves a project, and then four months later, here's that environmental review document, and low and behold, the things we have speculated that were not going to be problems are problems. Now, it, they might not be, right? But the point is, we don't have a valid environmental review document. Or maybe we do, but we don't have some conclusive evidence, I feel, in the record from a subject matter expert stating that we do.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Whitman, Commissioner Reed, you know, the other thing that you could consider, if that's a condition that you would look to add to the plat recommendation, would could be something, some verbiage around verification of the applicability of the existing AUAR, or something of that nature, that isn't necessarily tying it to an approval of something? Because I think what we're discussing right now is a little bit about the merits, or the deadline, or something like that, that none of us are going to be those day-to-day subject matter experts on. So you could look to at a condition that would call to verify the, the, the application of it, or something like that, which is something that Planning Commissions and City Councils regularly do, subject to something being executed, or subject to verification of XYZ. So that could be an option for the Planning Commission to consider tonight if that motion is made.
And I would, I would, and that's what was going through my mind, too. And that verification, to me, would either be, as Commissioner Rivera contemplated, brought back to us where we can review that, maybe the subject matter expert appears here, or have that subject matter expert appear at the City Council meeting for that next step. Rather than just, yeah, we verified it, everything's good, let's get some clear evidence in the record analyzing this AUAR. You know, I think it's just the right thing to do.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Whitman, that is in line with a common practice, is that Planning Commission's recommendations are conditioned on, you know, we're going to take maybe a step back and look at a much less complex type of project, but certain things being buttoned up on the application that may or may not have been fully vetted out. Oftentimes, it's landscaping. You know, there's an application that we'll receive that has maybe a shortage of landscaping, and they weren't able to update it in time for the public hearing at the Planning Commission. So often, a condition that is added to the Planning Commission's recommendation to City Council, is that that basically be buttoned up, or addressed, or come into conformance by the time that the City Council takes action at their, their scheduled meeting. So I guess staff's recommendation would be something more in line with, with that, or in the, to the, kind of to the latter of what you had suggested, if that's the course that Planning Commission would choose to take.
And is that a reasonable thing, that the verification of that applicability would be able to be done by the City Council meeting?
I think it's, I think that, we can't answer that today necessarily, but it would be something that the City Council would have to then consider, or could consider as a part of their consideration of the approval.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from Commissioners? I will, before we move forward with, with motions, I will just share that I appreciate everyone coming tonight and sharing your comments and your concerns and your thoughts with us. I appreciate the representation from the applicant as well to help answer questions. This is not easy decisions for us. This, it is not something that, that I had a decision made prior to walking in the door tonight either. So it is something that we, we do take a lot of time with. Personally, I have done a lot of research on this. I have visited actually a data center in Altoona, Iowa, and looked at that facility, and imagined what that would be like here. And I will say that I'm very glad that this one is set back from the road. Not that that one wasn't nice, but it was, it will be nice to have that buffer of trees between it, but I did observe some of the, observed for some of the concerns that we hear tonight, and I can say I did not experience any of those concerns. Obviously, I couldn't experience the EMF or some of those things. But there is a lot of work that we do to research these ahead of time, as well as listening to the comments from staff, from the residents, not only just here tonight, but also I've attended the City Council meetings, I've listened to them ahead of time. So we've been hearing your comments for multiple months, and have had time to, to take those in to consideration tonight as well, before making a decision. So, and I do want to just thank staff for your hard work on the report, and the thorough, thoroughness of the staff report, and answering our questions tonight, and holding the open house for questions. I very much appreciated all of that information that we were able to, to take into consideration. I do also echo Commissioner Reed's thoughts, I do feel that this is going to be a good development for our city. I do think it is an appropriate use for our business park area. I do really like the thought that it's, it's set back so far from the road, you're not going to, the visibility of it is going to be minimal, it's going to have a nice tree landscape and wetlands in front of it. And so I do feel like it's going to be a very nice, a nice transition with the housing and DCTC and this facility going down the road there. So that is my, my thoughts on it. I do appreciate everyone's time, and everyone from staff's time tonight, to help us reach our decisions as we sit here. With that, I will make a motion to recommend the City Council approve the Rosemont Technology Edition preliminary and final plats, subject to conditions one through five in the staff report, with the addition of condition six, that adds the outlot on block two, lot one, or to change the block two, lot one piece of the plat to an outlot, and condition seven, that has verification of the applicability of the existing AUAR, and an update on that provided before, or at the City Council meeting when this is presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our next motion this evening is to recommend the City Council approve the final site and building plan for the Project Bigfoot planned unit development, subject to conditions one through nine, as listed in the staff report.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our public hearing section this evening. Do we have any new business?
We do not, Madam Chair.
For discussion, this item, I'm sorry, let me step back one second. This item will go to the City Council meeting on December 5th, which is next Tuesday. So this project will move forward to City Council on December 5th, next Tuesday. Our next meetings, I have Monday, December 18th, because of the holiday, January 23rd, our normal fourth Tuesday of the month, and then February is also a Monday, February 26th. I can't remember, something with elections or voting, or...
Caucuses.
Caucuses, thank you. Something that required us to move that. So those are the next three meetings. If you have any conflicts with those, please let Alicia and staff know as soon as possible. Any other items for discussion?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, that brings us to adjournment. I will adjourn our meeting this evening. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.